...to come out here tonight. We're gonna start shortly here. We're just waiting on Commissioner Macy to join us.
There's an increase in my budget next year for supplies.
Of course, Chief O'Donnell-Hugh. All right, I'm gonna call to order the December 17th, 2018 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're gonna begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Lavassar, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you can.
Thank you. As we gather during the holiday season, let us enjoy our time with family, friends, and neighbors. And as we move forward to serve our community, let our conversations be spirited but kind, let our decisions be guided by the purest of motivations, and let our judgment be guided by knowledge and wisdom greater than our own. We ask this. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, before we get into the meat of our agenda tonight, I wanted to make an announcement for everyone. It's with heavy hearts we mourn the passing of our dear friend and colleague, Chef Tim Campbell. In a career that spanned more than three decades, Chef Tim prepared thousands of meals for local seniors at the Mahaney-Meineger Senior Center. And celebration of his life event is being held and planned in Chef Tim's honor at the Senior Center. We'll provide more details soon. In the meantime, donations to help Chef Tim's family with burial expenses are being accepted at the Senior Center. While we search for a new chef to fill some very big shoes, the senior meal program at the Mahaney-Meineger Senior Center is suspended. Please share this information with your friends and loved ones who counted on Chef Tim for his meals. Our sympathies go out to Tim, his family, and for those he served at the Senior Center. So, we're gonna begin tonight with public comment. Just a few rules about public comment before we begin. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now is the time set aside to address the City Commission on city-related issues, both on the agenda and not. As there are no public hearings scheduled for tonight's meeting, this will be the only time for you to address the City Commission. I ask that comments be directed to the City Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight at either public comment, well, we don't have a public hearing tonight, so at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, then come up to the podium. For the record, state your name and address, and you have a timer here at the podium to help you keep track of your time. Please be mindful that the City Commission does wanna hear from as many people who wish to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes or less. If you don't wish to speak tonight, don't worry. You can always reach out to us, email, phone, et cetera. Please note that the City Commission will not respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes and will address questions when the agenda topic is discussed or refer to the proper City Department if the matter isn't scheduled on the agenda. Our City Manager's also taking notes, and he looks into matters as necessary. So, with that, who's first tonight?
Yes, sir, Scott. I'm taller than that, I guess. I'm Scott Brown. I live at 524 East Lincoln in the beautiful city of Royal Oak. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the special event permit for the Royal Oak Unity Fair planned for the 20th through 23rd of June. Seems like a fine event for family and kids, and for our case, it would help fundraising. I'm here on behalf of the Royal Oak Schools Foundation, and we're trying to grow our endowment so we can do more great work for the schools and the faculty and the students. And we're always looking for fundraising events to participate in, and I was made aware of this one, and I wanted to come and speak positively on behalf of it, and hopefully you'll be able to approve it. I'm gonna cut short in about 45 seconds. That's unusual for me. So, that's everything I have to say. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Who's next? Yes, sir. It's not me. Yeah, sure, absolutely. I think the pregame for Monday Night Football's over.
Sounds like the Lions are doing any better.
That comes out right here. The water coming out of that...
He's got some very active pants, that City Manager.
And you're supposed to have the little earpiece that we can't see coming up your sweater.
Enough for everybody.
All right. I think we're good now. My apologies.
Oh, it's fine. Does everyone have a document? I'd really like, before I start, for everyone to have that piece of document. It's very important for procedures. All right. Everyone ready? My name is Andrew Kalanowski. As stated on the water bill, I live at 1008 Batavia, and I need your help. I bought the house August 20th, 2017, and I've lived there since then. This is the first time I ever owned a house, and this is the first time I ever paid a water bill. I paid $11.25 per cycle, per quarter, until recently, and I was never aware this was abnormal. If you look on page four, it's in chronological order, latest on page one, the earliest on page four. If you look at page four, last quarter I got a bill for $1,799.15. I called the Water Department. I spoke to the receptionist. If I could summarize our conversation, I asked her what this is about. She said, "This is not a real bill. This is to scare you to get your water meter replaced." I gave her the water meter read, which is 392. That means zero, apparently in water reading language. She explained to me, "If that is the case, you owe nothing from now on, and you'll be billed starting your next cycle." On page three, as you can tell, I have not received my next bill. Instead, I've been billed from everything on page three all the way up to page one, $1,889, to now a reduced rate of $797.14. In fact, the latest bill, they changed the estimate to an actual. Now, here's what's really important. There is no actual water read. It is only estimates. They are basing it off of, on page two, AWWA standards per a family of four. I am a single male with a small dog that weighs less than 10 pounds. We're barely home because I travel a lot for work. I've spoken to other individuals who are single my age, and their water bill is usually $50 to $60 per month. I'm requesting three things of the City. First off, that the water bill, the public water bill from 2016 to now be sat down and explained to me by a City Commissioner or of sort. The water meter to be tested by a third-party company of my choosing at the City's expense, and hard actual reading. And that's the problem. There is no hard actual reading. You're basing my bill off an estimate that could've been broken before I bought the house. And if that is the case, that is on the City, not me. If they miss that, it's unreasonable to have this is in, one, figure out how the water meter works and how it reads, and, two, if it's malfunctioning, I'm not an engineer. I don't understand these things. Therefore, I'm protesting this bill, and I will not pay it until further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalanowski.
Yes.
Do you have an email address anywhere in here?
I can give it to you. I have emailed you in the past, but I can email you tonight if you want.
You, at some point in the meeting, can write it down and provide it to our City Clerk. That'd be helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, who's next? Yes, sir, Mr. Ashley.
Alan Ashley, Royal Oak Manor. I'd like to speak on two things. The first is on item number eight, the Tequila Blue remodel job. In the summertime, I don't mind music, but at 2:00 AM when they're still playing music, when there's the...
It gets a little loud.
...and I'm on the Williams side, which is the far east side. I don't face Main Street, yet I hear it, and it's like being I'm in the building. That is how loud it is. And with this new rebuild and they're outside, it's gonna be even louder competing with even more music from them karaoke and the blues and the jazz that they play until 2:00 AM. If this could be stopped and have them stop playing music, maybe at midnight would be nice, but going on till 2:00, sometimes even 2:30 in the morning, is ridiculous. And the other thing I wanna talk about is the Unity Fair. This, again, is going to affect Royal Oak Manor and its parking on that main parking. I want to be, set up a time that I can talk to somebody about parking before we get a snafu like we did for the last Arts Beats and Eats. I don't want my people having to park three and a half blocks away from Royal Oak Manor because an event is happening across the street from us. And having vendors parking all over the place, and we can't even get in and out of our own building and our own parking lots. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley.
Hi, my name's Kathy Gast, and I live at 402 West Bloomfield in Royal Oak. I am a board member and secretary on the Royal Oak Environmental Advisory Board. Recently, I discovered that one of my colleagues, Tom Regan, has been term limited. And I'm asking the Commission or all the people in front of me if he can be considered to be reappointed. Tom is unique in that he has a lot of institutional knowledge, and he is an incredible worker. So, I've served along with him as a colleague and as when he was Chair. And the only thing harder probably than working for Tom is working alongside of him. I mean, he's at every event. He kinda encouraged me to have a little bit more gumption when it comes to some of the outreach that we do. So, he's like, Kathy, you're gonna get a lot of talk to the hand, but just persevere and, you know, have these people come up to our table and really engage with them. He's a real asset, and I think that that should not be overlooked. I realize that there are term limits. That was never an issue in the past. I think it's because we've done a really good job with outreach and presence on social media, and it's probably piqued a lot of interest for other people in the community, where just two years ago, I was still recruiting people. But I don't think we should throw the baby out with the bathwater. He has a lot of, not only a good work ethic, that he actually shows up and participates, but he has a lot of good ideas. And one of his catchphrases is, there's a lot of ideas that come up, because a lot of people, some people think that our board is just like a meetup, just gonna hang out and talk. And he'll say, "Well, who wants to champion that idea?" And, believe me, if he champions something, it's, he goes through to fruition for it. So, I ask that you consider someone with all that integrity and work ethic to remain on the board for at least another term. Thanks.
Thanks. Kathy, and thank you for your service on the Environmental Advisory Board.
Thank you.
You did an amazing job. Who's next? Mr. Wolf? Is that a hand?
C3, North Troy Street. Pardon me for not being terribly prepared. I have so many issues to speak to tonight. I hope that the Royal Oak Manor will be settled finally, and I'm just very upset as to why it took so long to get some kind of agreement for them. And just extremely, I was extremely upset, because I could imagine myself in their situation. The other thing, I was just talking to Judy about the farmer's market suggesting that possibly they stay open to another extra hour on Farmer's Day and Saturday, I presume. And they said, "Well, it's very hard for the farmers," but I don't know. I would leave it up to them. I think that would help. I also think that if you really wanna do a boon for the city, instead of spending money on promotions and hot air balloons and god knows what else. I mean, I went to that thing at late at night, and I realized when I went there, it was freezing. And then I did have to park at a meter, and I had to worry about the meter. And I left before the balloons went up about a, probably, I didn't, I was told it was gonna go at 8:30. We left at about seven, it's about a little after 7:00. I went into La Roche, the business, which is near, not far from the tents, and I was dismayed to find out that, well, I've been there, that when I went into this tent, that they, you brought in people to selling similar merchandise. And I thought, if I was a business owner downtown, why would I want to support a DDA that brings in outside competition to compete with my business, and then they're asking me to stay open, you know? So, I'm saying to myself, wow. You know, a little forethought, I think, would go a long way. And speaking of forethought, when I was speaking to Judy, and she mentioned bar mitzvahs are very popular at the farmer's market. And I'm from New York, and in my own family, bar mitzvahs are like a competition. Which family does the biggest and the bestest? And Woody Allen, in fact, he did, made a comedy about that one time. And I can tell you stories you wouldn't believe. But I'm saying to myself, this is why I wanna see a good, a nice fountain downtown and a nice park, LED lights, you know. If, I hear they really go overboard at the farmer's market setting up, and the people don't believe in. And by the way, the noises, you don't hear rock music, and you don't hear screaming and yelling drunks and all that stuff. It's really a nice affair. And I'm thinking, what a nice thing to do with a city park. And I also wanna bring up the Billy Johnson Kitty Park in Central Park. I wish you would Google that and see the marvelous slide they made and how interesting and how imaginative that park is for kids. I still see the kids, even in this weather, jumping on those bees while the parents are fidgeting, wondering, saying, "Well, come on, kids, let's go. It's cold out," you know, but they wanna jump on those bees and play.
Mr. Wolf, I do need you to finish with the last thought.
Okay, so I'm begging you to consider LED fountain, dancing waters. I mean, Dan Gilbert, 35-story office building. You put in a nice park. He says there's no more room downtown in Detroit for a 35-story office building, but you bring in a nice, beautiful fountain, and you will have 35-story offices begging to come to Royal Oak, looking for spaces to build. And that's my opinion, because I've been there, and I know what's going on in surrounding cities. I really do. And I know that property values in Royal Oak are gonna skyrocket to levels you don't believe, even downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Yes, in the back.
Hello, I'm Liz Tierney. I live at 529 Florence.
I'm Mike Tierney, her husband.
We sent you a letter last week concerning a driveway issue that we're having on our street. We've lived in our house for 30 years. Sorry, trying not to get emotional. The parcel that's next to us was combined with two lots alongside the railroad tracks, because those lots became unbuildable when the railroad went through. The lot, the lot next to us was 45 feet wide at one point and couldn't accommodate its own driveway, which made it, you know, when they created the common driveway, it made sense. When they got the larger property, they never moved their driveway. The new people came in, they bought the larger lot, they saw an opportunity to move their driveway to the other side and to get rid of the driveway on our side. We told them we have a driveway agreement, you know, a Libor file driveway agreement. They appeared to understand that. They gave us a plot plan to sign, which I think I provided to all of you in the email, expressing to us that they would temporarily take out the driveway and then reinstall it after the backfill was in, but that never happened. They proceeded to install their utilities in our driveway, their gas meter in our driveway. While we were on vacation, they took out our apron and our sidewalk, which was a little upsetting when we got back. The current condition of the driveway looks something like this. Can you pass this around to you? I don't know what the City can do to help us restore this.
We haven't had a driveway since last January. We have a single parking spot in front of our house due to a fire hydrant, and we've been trying to get help, and we just haven't gotten any support. We'd like the City's support to tell these people we need a driveway. They need to work with us.
We've spent $6,500 on lawyers and surveys. I don't think we should've had to spend anything. We didn't move our property. We didn't try to change our property. This was somebody else coming in and changing their property and trying to thereby change the profile of our property.
We just want our driveway back as we had it for 28 years. And we'd appreciate some support from the City to look into it, please.
We hear ya.
Okay.
Is this your driveway here on the left?
On the right.
The right?
The left that they've filled up with all that debris is just spite. It's just to keep us out.
Oh.
Thank you, if you can see that. But we had a shared driveway from this Florence Avenue. We live at 529 Florence.
So, your garage is here, the...
Correct. And it went up between the houses and split to the garages.
Okay.
And the garage that used to stand on the property next door with the former smaller house.
This is the original? Okay.
Yeah, that's what it looked like previously.
I don't wanna give you false hope. There are limitations about what we can do with civil property disputes, but...
We understand that. I think that with the construction that's going in Royal Oak, I don't think we're probably the only people that are facing these frustrations with these builders that come in. But I think that the burden has been put on us to defend, after it's been taken out, is really difficult.
No, I feel for ya. And I think that one of the things we can take a look at is making sure they're complying with all of our construction ordinances. That's the first thing we can commit to doing. But, you know, as it relates to getting the shared property and everything resolved, that might be a challenge for us, but, you know, we'll...
The driveway was shown on the plot plan that we signed, and then they removed it afterwards. I don't know if the City can enforce that they build to what they submitted to you, as opposed to changing the plans down the road, you know, for involved parties.
It looks like it happened to us, like they told you, submitted something to the City and then changed their decision, that they just weren't gonna put the driveway back.
We hear ya. We feel ya.
Okay.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you very much.
And thank you. We appreciate your sharing your story. And I'll take a look. I did see your email, and I went through it. So, we have some questions for staff, too, but we might have some limitations, but we'll, you know, if we can do something, we will. All right, thank you. Mr. Wenland.
My name is John Wenland. I live at 703 Irving, Royal Oak. I've been a resident of Royal Oak for 85 years, and I think it's Sunday. Anyway, I'm here tonight to ask some questions about, I heard rumors in the past summer here about the Royal Memorial talking about moving it. And I kept saying, "Why do they keep talking about moving the Royal Memorial?" When they're moving the Royal Memorial, my understanding, and I kinda written the language a little bit about it, because I introduced it to the City some years ago, I think it was 2006, to have that piece of property dedicated. But I see that you guys, somebody did in the City some time back, changed one word. You changed, took the word "dedicated" out there and put "designated," which means a different meaning, as you know. By taking the word "dedicated" out of that language, you took it, the rights away from the citizens of Royal Oak. That's why we put it in there. And the reason why we wanted to put that in there, if you wanna move the Royal Memorial, do, change anything about the Royal Memorial, has to be decided by the citizens of Royal Oak, not the City Commission. Back in, I think it was 1957 or thereabouts, Royal Memorial Park was, is dedicated, and the City wanted to sell it, and they voted to sell it. Other Commissioners, including the mayor, voted to sell it, but they had to put on the belt because that piece of property was dedicated. And it was voted down 5 to 1. That was the reason why I wanted to put that language in when they moved the Royal Memorial, which is now. And I wanna know what you people are talking about, about moving the Royal Memorial. I need that answer.
Well, Mr. Wenland, I can tell you that we've had no discussions about moving the Royal Memorial, so I can't understand where your sources of information are. In fact, we've had quite the opposite discussions, at least from the beginning, related to the Civic Center project. So, at least I haven't been involved in any. Commissioner Perush.
Mr. Wenland, can you stay for item number seven on the agenda, which is the discussion about the park, which will discuss this issue? Or if not, I can read to you very briefly what the task force has said about this so far.
I don't know.
Can you stay for the next item on the agenda, number seven, or do you want me to read it? It's just, it's relatively short. Okay. This is after all of the public comments that were gathered. I'm the Chair of the task force for this park. Of 1,500 comments, and one of the biggest ones and the most important ones, the summary of it was this. The public essentially said, "The Veterans Memorial is a sacred and artistic commemoration, and we must continue to pay the utmost respect to our fallen heroes. It makes sense to move the memorial, but only, only, if there is a better place," orientation, which means, "Should it be turned around," or position to enhance the overall design of both the park and the memorial. So, essentially, all of those public comments essentially said, "It is sacred to us. We don't wanna mess with it. We would only change it if collectively we think we could do it even better than it is now. Other than that, it's gonna stay where it is." So, that's where we are with this right now.
Does that mean that you'll be making, this body here is gonna make the decision than the people of Royal Oak? If that, if that situation ever comes up, if they wanna change it?
Yes.
That's what I'm on. I get to both sides of it, and far as I'm concerned, all these years.
No decision on any design or anything is gonna be made anytime soon, but when it is, it will be done with this in mind.
And with this body, ultimately.
This, by here, right, by this Commission.
Well, you still have an answer to my question. Are we gonna vote, make a decision, make the final decision, or will you people make the final decision?
We will make the final decision.
So, sometime in the past future, this body, maybe not you people, but the body before, turned upon themselves and kinda cheated a little bit, because they didn't tell nobody about changing that one little word.
Well, Mr. Wenland, I can tell you with, without, with 100% certainty that whatever we do related to the memorial and to the park will be a 100% transparent process. And, you know, just like Commissioner Perush read, with great reserve in mind as it relates to the, in reverence as it relates to the memorial. So, there's nothing active here. There's nothing, it was acknowledged by 1,500 people, at least in the outcome, that this is a very important part of our identity, and it's a very sacred ground for us, so as a community. So, you have the assurances that everybody values the Royal Memorial. You have the assurances that it's top of mind when we're talking about the park. And I can tell you, we haven't had any discussions or decisions about moving it. In fact, we've only discussed how we protect it. So, I know we've gone beyond the three minutes, but if we wanna talk more, be more than happy to chat with you, Mr. Wenland.
Well, I wanna say, for now, I won't talk about that anymore. I had to kinda digest it and see what you guys are saying. And anyway, before I leave, I want to wish everybody here and behind me, and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas. If you're Jewish, happy Hanukkah. I know you was in the first week in December. And I hope, I can say Merry Christmas and not Happy Holiday. That, to me, is all...
Mr. Wenland, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
All right, who's next? Going once, going twice. Oh, I see a hand back there. Is that Mr. Witz?
Coming before the Commission later, but I'm speaking quickly on another issue before you, which is the extension of the development agreement for the large lot bordered by 6, 7th, and Main. I just wanted to... And just wanted to make a comment for consideration in your discussion this evening with regard to extending a, a little bit of a delay. If you're extending the rights to the lot, I'm asking for consideration to, to delay actually when ground is broke through twenty twenty of Labor Day weekend. Obviously, that is the weekend of Arts Beats and Eats and you know, I think the city has, I think the city has, you know, waited on this project a little bit. There have also been a lot of developments that have gone on, very successful with both positive and negative feedback that you've heard. And there's a lot going on in the city and we are awaiting the potential of moving Arts Beats and Eats to the park, potentially for our, our music stage. But without that space, it will be a tremendous inconvenience, as I've stated before, and potentially could adversely affect the event in a major way. And just asking if by the time, you know, I know there's issues of tenants and plans and all that, so it's going to be a natural delay anyway. But twenty twenty really gets us to the vision point of when the space might be ready for a move. So just asking for the consideration in that discussion. It's, there, I know there's another event that goes on there, there's a potentially a third one that could be added. It's a great space and you guys have done some amazing work with developments and projects that everyone has seen come to fruition and, and be successful and a lot going on in the city. So just asking for the consideration. We understand that this project is a very, is, it's important, the development's important at some point and just asking for the delay of build for till twenty twenty, just to let things go as they've gone, you know, for a very successful event that has had a major economic impact for many years consistently, a major contribution to local nonprofits for many years. And I know I am not having to overstate that, I think everyone understands that and, and just asking for the consideration in that discussion. And I will also wish everyone Happy Holidays too and look forward to talking to you in a few, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Witz. Anybody else here to speak tonight? Once, twice? All right, we're going to bring the meeting back up to this side of the table, which brings us to item number five, the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Perush.
I'll move approval of the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Perush, supported by Commissioner Macy. Discussion on the approval of the agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, we have an agenda. Which brings us to item number six, which is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Okay, the consent agenda consists of claims from December eighteen, two thousand and eighteen, approval of purchase orders, contract modification to cap seventeen ten, two thousand and seventeen, water main improvements, contract modification, contract cap seventeen oh two, twenty seventeen sidewalk improvement program, confirmation of city manager appointments to downtown development authority, request to terminate agreement with volunteer energy and resume purchasing natural gas from consumers' energy, approval of renewal of West Law subscription, approval of tobacco product ordinance amendment, second reading, receive and file non-action items November two thousand and eighteen Franco Project Activity Report. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Macy, is there support? Supported by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion on the consent agenda. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, this brings us to the marquee presentation of the evening, item number seven, presentation of Downtown Park Task Force, um, uh, community engagement. I'm going to ask Commissioner Perush to kick this off for us. She has been our dedicated city commissioner, working tirelessly and putting her efforts and thoughts into what was surely will be a dream of a downtown park. Commissioner Perush.
Thank you very much. It looks like Noah and Fraus has bought donuts. Oh, no, those are different things.
Oh, man.
Darn, it looked like a donut box. You're getting hard copies of the presentation that you're going to see up on the screen. Just very briefly, before I turn this over to Noah and Fraus, a couple of things. We were impressed to learn when this was presented to the task force last week that Noah and Fraus, in their public engagement process over the late summer and early fall, managed to get comments from fifteen hundred people, individuals, over the course of their public engagement. That is very, very impressive. That's either talking to them at Arts Beats and Eats or survey responses or any other types of comments that came in. We were very impressed that it was that large of a number. Over eight hundred people took the online survey alone and that by itself was very impressive. The second thing to keep in mind as you go through the presentation this evening is that this is not a design, these are not design ideas. This is nothing in terms of, oh, these are the top ten lists of things that people want in the park. The, this is a presentation of the overall concepts that people want to see in the park design, the ultimate park design. And so they're going to be talking in a lot of ways, in generalities, which for some of us who are, you know, we want the specific list, is a little frustrating until you realize that this process has to have been gone through before we can hand this over to a design team, once we ultimately pick the architect and designer for this park. And so you're going to hear a lot of generalities about concepts and themes and images and all of that kind of stuff and not any specifics because we aren't to that point yet. So just keep that in mind and just keep an open mind and just kind of, you know, just accept it for what it is tonight. And the third thing is that the next step in this process is actually selecting a designer for the park, an architect. The staff is developing an RFP. We will go out for bids and we'll seek proposals from a, a large network of, of park designers and people who might be interested in this project. Those submissions will come back to the task force, we'll narrow it down and we'll probably interview a handful of them to pick the one that we're comfortable with, which is the same process that the Normandy Oaks Task Force went through in terms of picking that designer. And then we will work toward a design. All of this will continue to be a public process. You'll have an opportunity to continue to give input into the, the development of this park in each stage of the process. So don't hesitate to email us or comment here or whatever as this goes forward or take an opportunity to actually participate in the public comment sections of this process as it goes forward. So with that, we will turn it over to Noah and Fraus. Greg Rassel, who is the very fine staff person who is coordinating this task force, is here this evening as well. But it's Noah and Fraus who put together this presentation and so I guess we will turn it over to them.
Thank you very much. Jeff Huda with Noah and Fraus Engineering and with me tonight is Bob Ford with Landscape Architects and Planners. Collaboratively, we've been working on not only the Normandy Oaks project, but also the Downtown Park project itself. Commissioner Peruk did a wonderful job of summarizing for you a lot of the thoughts and ideas that were presented at the task force meeting this past Wednesday. Just a couple of thoughts for you folks before I turn it over to Bob. He's going to do most of the heavy lifting tonight. We got kicked off on this on July twenty-third. We, every step of this process was built upon and helped lay the groundwork for the other phases of work that we did. So first order of business, we had stakeholder interviews. Those stakeholder interviews were with the Inter Club Council, the DDA, homeowners group, and then also the city employees. What we were able to garner out of that was a lot of the thoughts and ideas that collectively those groups and organizations really had on their mind as heavy users, people that are going to be using this facility, had their nose to the grindstone or ear to the ground with respect to what it is that, at, at least as groups, what was needed in the downtown. So from there, we were able to formulate surveys and, and different ways to communicate with folks. The next things that we did were the meet, greet and listen sessions. There was three of those that were required by a contract, but we actually accomplished five. We did the iDig Royal Oak event, we did Arts Beats and Eats, we did the farmer's market, we went to the library for a day, and then we also went to one of the food truck rallies. So each one of those, we were able to hand out little mini surveys, we handed out cards, asked them to come to the visual preference survey, which was the next step. We collected emails. I think we've got close to seventeen hundred emails right now that we're able to connect with people who gave us email addresses as a part of this process and informed people of tonight's meeting, things of that nature, so that we could stay connected. From those meet, greet and listen sessions, that helped us guide to the next step, which is the visual preference survey. Our first visual preference survey was on October sixth and if you didn't have a chance to attend that, it was really a dynamic process where all of the participants had little eye clickers, we were showing displays on the screen and folks in the crowd voted based on what they thought was the most pleasing image to them or what they liked about something in particular, answering a whole host of different questions. So from that visual preference survey, we were able to filter that down even further, getting into more site selection, amenities, things of that nature, in the second visual preference survey, which was on, on November third. Those visual preference surveys, I think we had over two hundred and fifty people attend those, so it was well attended and a very successful event. From there, the visual preference surveys laid the groundwork for the development of the online user survey that was broadcast citywide and was really available for anybody that visited the city website and anybody who really gave us email addresses as a part of the overall community engagement process. That online user opinion survey was open from November ninth to the nineteenth and we collected those results. Bob will go over them remarkably. A lot of the results are fairly similar from survey to survey, which is very helpful, I think, for the designers of the park. And just emphasizing again what Commissioner Peruk had indicated, you know, our task was not to design anything, our task was really to collect a lot of information and we trust, trust us when we say the information that we collected is very well served for the designers who are going to be designing the park so that they are really going to be able to hit the ground running as it relates to moving that design forward. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Bob and let him take it from here.
Jeff? Good evening. Happy holidays. This was a pretty exciting process that we went through and it touched a lot of people. I appreciate the summation, I think that was very well said and how people react, reacted to the survey. In one of the first slides here, we'll see the gender demographics. One of the things that we noticed is that a large percentage of females participated in this process, about sixty to forty was the ratio. If you look on the slide on your left, where it's sort of horizontally oriented, that is the online survey results. The green is the female, the blue is the male, so you begin to see that pattern. And if you go over to the right-hand side, on the upper right, we have the visual, visual preference number one and below visual preference number two, you can see the same characteristic carries through there as well. So the next slide then talks about the age demographics. And again, if you look at the slide on your left, which is the online survey, you'll notice that there's a, a kind of a bell curve there and it tends to be more toward the middle, younger generations. And then if you look at visual preference survey number one and two, you'll notice that there, in, in one, it's kind of an overlap, but it starts to tilt a little bit more to the older generations. And then in visual preference survey number two, it, it is the older generations that are speaking there. So when you combine all this, now the numbers aren't all the same, of course, in terms of the, the number of people, but, but we have hit a pretty good cross-section of the community. The next slide talks about summary of the engagement process. The site is about two acres in size and this project was not meant to be an analytical survey, instead it was meant to be an organic process, which stimulates from the community upward in terms of their views. And it leads to statements about what the residents want in a future park and what they want it to look and what they want it to feel like. So just as the cover shows on this document, a young girl, a man, a younger teenage person, et cetera, it, it represents the grassroots of the, the community. And in talking with these people one-on-one, we were able to get a very good impression of what they're thinking. And then with the documented processes that Jeff had mentioned, we're able to get somewhat of a quantitative. So you get qualitative and quantitative coming together to create this pattern. So I wanted to mention that the statements within the summary were derived directly from what the participants provided to us. This is the people speaking to us. It's their hand sketches, their narratives, their references, their photographs, different images that they collected, opinions and their oral descriptions, very organic in nature. When you see quotation marks in this document, it means that the residents are speaking directly to you. And when there aren't quotations, it's the professionals, it's us interpreting, capsulizing the fragmented thoughts, the impressions and emotions into succinct statements, trying to capsulize what they're saying. You both mentioned about the, a number of processes that we went through and this is a summation on this next page, where we had forty-one representatives in the stakeholder meetings. But be aware that each one of those representatives represented a number of other people within the organization. So that number, don't be misled by how many people are being represented there. The community outreach gatherings, eighty-six questionnaires were received from the five events that we attended. The visual preference survey, three hundred plus, the online, eight hundred and eighty-two, and conversations, countless conversations with residents throughout the process. In fact, I'm still engaged with some comments with people following up on the telephone or if they've emailed me about their particular concerns. We do have all of that within the three hundred page report that's here and that each of you should have received an electronic copy. That gives you every piece of information that we collected throughout the process. So even though what's being said here is in general terms, you can certainly trace it back to the data within the surveys and within the questionnaires. So the, the topics, the headers at the top are categories that we, the professionals, have put together to try to categorize and make some sense out of how all this data was received. When we say learning by example, what we're doing is we've reviewed every submital, every park and every reference of every park that people have engaged us in. And we tried to take away what they were telling us in their narrative. So throughout the engagement process, they submitted all sorts of items to us. Their ideas, although their references represent a menagerie of ideas, there are elements within each image that were repeated and that speak to the look and feel, which will help inspire, excite, encourage and ultimately shape the future park. The future design team will understand what is being asked of them and the challenge that is before them. That challenge is to take multiple elements and programs and meld them into a beautiful mosaic that is yet simple and cohesive. So a lot of detail came out of this and the design team that comes to be, behind us will be able to make sense and, and make it into a, a more of a simplistic statement. Living, breathing and interactive landscapes. An open space designed for flexible uses, repeated over and over again. We don't know the differences between artificial and natural turf, so educate us, let the experts help us make the right choice. The reason that was even a statement is because in the visual preference survey, which was also online, it did have artificial turf and it did have natural grass turf. Overwhelmingly, people were selecting the natural grass turf. But this one reference said, "We should really know the differences," so that's why it's there. Pastorial scenes, using trees, flowers and grasses, and the Royal Oak was mentioned numerous times. Allow the landscape to embrace children, adults and seniors, cutting across all age demographic. The park has to look alive and if you want it, if you want it to be alive. Indigenous plants contained within crisp forms. So when you think of indigenous plants, you're talking about the natives, kind of the wild, the wild side. But if you contain it, this, these people were saying. But if you contain it, as these people were saying, in crisp forms, it takes an elegant feel. They prefer a park that has more green spaces and plantings, as opposed to concrete and steel. We heard that repeatedly. I would like the park to have lots of trees, greenery, and flowers, over and over again. These next two images, this one here of Central Park, again, let's not confuse size, let's not confuse the amount of items that can fit into the park. What these images are trying to portray is this is the feeling that I want to get when I walk through the park. A large canopy with a very simplistic walkway. Miller Park in Chattanooga, Tennessee, here's the large, open space that people were referring to, surrounded by trees, although in their youth at this point in time, eventually you'll start to take on that same look and feel. A refined artistic composition. Let the art be sophisticated, diverse, and inspirational. We've had people also state that these artistic displays should be rotated from time to time. Embrace all forms of art, but be selective and set a high bar. Feel free to relocate Star Dream, but only if it makes a significant contribution to the overall look and feel of the park. The Veterans Memorial is a sacred and artistic commemoration, and we must continue to pay tribute, the utmost respect to our fallen heroes. If it makes sense to move the memorial, but only if there's a better place, orientation, or position to enhance the overall design, or both the park and the memorial. So that is a very strong statement, and it warrants careful, very careful consideration. And finally, we need to promote our local artists as much as possible. The next images that you see is Millennium Park. Millennium was cited countless times as well, and the look and feel that you get as you move through that park. Also, Frederick Meyer Garden, and how you move through that, and the artistic displays that are shown there as an example. Physical and mental contemplation. I would like to feel calm and comfortable, something renewing to the spirit. Please don't force things, let them evolve naturally, all quotations. Provide contemplative spaces and allow for quiet solitude. A place to relax and enjoy the out-of-doors within the city. Comfortable, movable, attractive seating. A place to meditate, stretch, and feel good about our park and our city. Provide spaces conducive to lingering, resting, engaging, exercising, working, and contemplating. Keep it functional, fun, and inspirational. So they're definitely looking for those calm, somewhat secluded spaces that you can get away to while you're within the hustle and bustle of the average workday. They cited Beacon Park, as you can see on this illustration, and that was cited many times. It just so happens, people like this park so much, and yet they wanted the natural turf. Well, Beacon Park is a combination. That central circle is artificial turf. Everything else is natural landscape. Beacon Plaza, New York City, place of solitude, where you can get away from the maddening Soothing, playful, and entertaining. I would like to keep as much vintage charm of the city as possible. Relax and stroll, sit and reflect, chit-chat with friends, and read. A place for a break in a beautiful, truly aesthetic atmosphere. Add a little culture to the day. I think they're referring to the artistic displays. I would like to listen to music in the park. It is important that our park is not empty and unused. It needs to have features that draw people to it, so that it is filled with activity and people, placemaking activities that bring people together, and will make the park a lively, happy place. Provide four-season interests, including winter activities such as ice skating and other forms. You'll see Promenade Park in Toledo, Ohio, and all of the different types of activities and congregations of people, including outdoor amphitheater, artistic displays, and play areas. And then Campus Marshus in Detroit, which was mentioned a lot, and how people like it and how they like how it's programmed. The park needs to have its own voice. "We," the park, "need to say, 'we are authentic Royal Oak,' not Birmingham or Troy," direct quote. The park should be designed for this city. Give us a park that can host all types of things, but not look like any one of them. It should look like Royal Oak. This area of the city should not be referred to as a park, but rather a town square or city center, and add a cool factor. The park must provide what downtown is missing: greenery, water, a play center for children. Would like the park to be warm and welcoming for all ages. The I Am Amsterdam exhibit was shown, trying to replicate the idea of that I am Royal Oak. The High Line in New York offers that rather indigenous plant materials against those crisp forms. Water allows for expression, fun, and beauty. Allow the water to be seen. Allow the water to be heard. Allow the water to cleanse. Allow the water to be touched. Allow the water to appear and disappear. They're obviously speaking of a fountain or some sort of water interplay. Cork Town Commons in Toronto, Canada, you can see the fountain, the children playing in that. Shane Park in Birmingham, it also has a fountain. That's a display. That's a very nice display. Illuminate, manipulate, and stimulate. Provide for different types and scales of light. Bright light for security. Subtle light for recognition of shapes. Mood light, creating an effect. And versatile light, changing it up and having light shows. Why not have a park where the light can dance across the park at different times of the evening? It may get quiet when it's time to sleep. It may be bright and cheerful during certain times of the evening, and it might serve as a backdrop for a variety types of displays and amphitheaters. Cadillac Square, this is one reference to where people thought it might be nice to gather, get collective, in certain areas. And there's also the shelters there, where people are actually working in those shelters during the day. And Boston Gardens, which is a very quiet, subtle, and relaxed landscape with the central Natural and artificial elements. Provide for both elements in harmonious composition. Use form and function to create intrigue and style. Use color, shapes, texture, proportion, and scale to complement one another. Change the ground elevation to provide some more interest. Include playful, intriguing elements using both natural and artificial forms. Provide for fun, engaging, educational experiences whenever possible. So it means that maybe the play element isn't so obvious, but the play element is there. And the play elements might not just be for children, they might be for adults, too. Here are some examples. Maggie Day Park, obviously a children's play design. And then the, I'll be not very good at pronouncing this, the Tsar Daye Park in Moscow, Russia, which is using a lot of artificial forms to create the same type of interplay. And then finally, elements that merit consideration and management. These are somewhat cautionary statements. The new downtown park is moving forward, so make it functional and affordable. The park needs to be secure, made for all citizens to feel comfortable. One of the ways for that to succeed is to program and use the park on a regular basis. People love watching, engaging with one another, which naturally promotes safety and comfort. Again, this is partially referenced to the Detroit parks, where they are monitored 24/7. The new city park and the city market need to coexist and support one another from a design flow and management perspective. And I think there's a lot to be read into that type of a statement as to how they can support one another. There should be enough parking to serve the people who want to use our park, but also our city market, city hall, police department, and court. Resist the temptation to allow sponsors, advertisers, and special interests to dominate the park. Let this park remain open and free from advertising. It should remain as the people's park. Keep the cost for development and maintenance manageable, so as not to overburden the citizens with additional taxes and millages. Not everyone will appreciate the noise that the park will generate, especially the nearby neighborhoods. Therefore, noise should be a consideration when programming events. So that concludes the overall, general summation of what people were saying. If you have any questions, I'll try my best to answer it, and we'll go from there.
Any questions for Mr. Ford or Mr. Huda? I think that all the questions were comprehensively answered in the 300-page report, is that what I'm reading?
Yeah, a lot of data there, awful lot of data. And that'll be given to the design team as well. So they'll be able to go through that, scour it, and come up with key elements, which will be generally supported in one way, shape, or form.
So Mr. Ford, I do have a question for you, a little bit more about your professional experience and opinion on, you know, with 1,500 participants, the first instinct is to say, "Yay, we got a lot of folks that came in and, you know, participated." Did you see any unusual waitings, or did you see a pretty, you know, good mix of individuals? Can you articulate that point a little bit better, and then how they responded, maybe? Do you feel that the, that there isn't waiting to one sort of demographic or another in the, in the survey respondents?
Well, in those first slides, gave us a pretty good indication. I mean, I could scan the audience, it's hard to scan the online survey, of course. But in the visual preference surveys, there tended to be an older crowd in both of them. There was a number of people that were in their 30s and 40s as well, 50s, 60s, and 70s, I think, were a little bit more predominant in those sessions. When you look at the online survey, however, it goes the other way. The majority were from the 30-year-olds to 40-year-olds into the 50-year-olds, and then tapered off from there. So what's nice about that is, and I was kind of worried about this, to be honest with you, whether or not we are going to get that broad cross-section. And I think we did. We might be lacking a little bit on the 20- to 30-year-old, but from that point on, I don't think so. I think we captured the majority, or at least a cross-section, of what the city is composed of.
Yeah, and I think you captured the people, too, that are highly likely to extract the most value, at least at this time in their life, you know, by using the park.
We've got some very good reflection from the older generations, and we got some, I think, yearnings and statements wanting it to be a little bit more modern in its approach. And the older generation's a little bit more reflective and traditional in its approach, which is common. You're going to get traditionalists, you're going to get people that want something a little bit more modern. So to strike the balance, I think, is the key.
And I think it's good, because those 20-year-olds are going to be 31- to 40-year-olds someday, and the 40-year-olds are going to be, you know, the 65-plus-year-olds one day. So it's good to have input from everyone, so you can enjoy the park not once, but for, you know, an entire lifetime.
You're here. Thank you very much. Oh, sorry.
So I liked, I really liked this presentation, and as you were reading through those words and those phrases, it really appealed to me, too. But I wondered with, if, in your opinion, if we're maybe asking for too much? Like, when you say soothing, I'm like, yes, I want it to be soothing. And then also, fully programmed and active, yes, I want it to be fully programmed and active. This is a two-acre park. Are the things that the residents are asking for something that's feasible to do?
So we told them it was two acres, we did. And what did we get? Central Park, as an example. So the two don't, don't mesh. We told them it was two acres repeatedly. But we also emphasized that we're looking for something within whatever examples you can come up with that speak to you, your internal mindset, and where you want this park to go. So no, we're not going to be able to get it all in two acres. I think that the clever choice is to make something that's fundamentally stable, simple, and speaks to the majority of the people. But I do think there's an opportunity to program it at specific times and allow the park to sort of rest during the other times, so that you can accomplish both, just through the programming and the natural occurrence of daily use, where there isn't any programming. And I think that's what they're trying to say. You know, don't program this thing, don't program the daylights out of it, but make sure that we have a lively park. So when you see that there isn't that liveliness, maybe you do need to increase programming. And when there's an overuse, maybe you need to ratchet back. So there will be some management that goes along with this particular space.
Thank you. One more thing, so you probably have heard that we have a $5 million budget for this park, which after Normandy Oaks seems like a goldmine. And I'm curious what your thoughts are on that $5 million budget, if it's appropriate, if it's too high. Please don't say too low.
You, you bring the money, they will spend it, okay? So it's never, never enough, it seems. But it really goes to, what are you, what, what are you trying to achieve? What bar, what level of quality are you trying to hit? And you can have quality items within the park that drive the cost up. You can have a very simplistic design that keeps the cost relatively low. So again, striking that balance. But I do think that you need to invest in, in art, because the people are telling us this comfortable seating, high-quality seating, things that they touch and feel that are close to them, areas that they can get away from the, from the city life, but also be able to create this event. So there's infrastructure that goes along with that, you have to support it. For example, LED lights, maybe they're cheap to run or maintain, but to put in, they might not be so cheap. But if you can create a display with those things and manage those, you might be able to get an economical, high-quality park, simplistically stated, with a variety of program uses. That's kind of the art of the deal. How do you, how do you do that?
That's your job.
Commissioner Newbuck?
Yeah, thanks. So this is the second time I have seen the presentation, and Commissioner Macy noted what had jumped out at me, which is, you know, residents really want us to thread the needle on this with, you know, passive beauty and programming, and art and culture and sustainability in all this confined space.
Sounds exciting, though, doesn't it?
It's an exciting opportunity, and it's clearly, you know, the centerpiece of the entire Civic Center development that I think people are really energized about. And so this is a great start in having this conversation. One thing that jumped out at me, that I guess I'm wondering if we can tease out a little bit more, if you have any further insight on, which is, people want, there's a lot of comment on the programming, which is, you know, things that we do in the park, right? But we're talking about designing the park. So are there ways? People want diversity of programming, they want the programming not to define the park. So as, as we're, when we begin, we're working with a design team, or they begin working, what is, what's the main takeaway there? Does that mean, don't commit to any permanent infrastructure design for a particular use, but rather have the park laid out in such a way that temporary installments are feasible? What do you take away from that? What do we take away from that?
Programming is, is really important to understand before you embark on the physical design and support of the park facilities that are going to support the programs. We're also in a very changing world. Things are changing rapidly. So just in the past five years, the trends that we have seen, we've never seen the trends change in park development as quickly as we have in the past five years. So we need to definitely make it programmable, but also remain flexible. So the infrastructure is important, and putting in additional infrastructure for things that you can't imagine today that might be available in 10 years from now. So what does that mean? Additional chases underneath the ground to service those different types of fiber optics, or different types of cables, or other ways that people want to interface with the park in the future. So I know I'm not answering your question directly, but I am saying that we have to think as far into the future as we can. And in this day and age, 20 years is a long way with the way things are changing. Have to be flexible. We have to understand programming, we have to try to react to it, we have to think of the future programming.
Thanks. Any other questions? All right, gentlemen, thank you so much for the comprehensive presentation. We appreciate your time here tonight, and we appreciate 1,500 people in our community that took time out of their busy schedules to help shape the future of this part of our community. So much gratitude to them, and of course, to the members of the board, including Commissioner Perush, you know, for your efforts, and we appreciate it. So thank you very much. Of course, to Mr. Russell from John. Of course, to Mr. Russell from John. Okay, this brings us to item number eight, which is the Michigan Liquor Control Commission License Establishment Tequila Blue, 526 South Main Street, request to amend the plan of operation. Chief.
Mayor, City Commission. This is a pretty simple request. As you're aware, 526 Tequila Blue is under new management. Tony and Dan Yesbeck have taken over management of that facility, and they are requesting to make a small change, which is an ad bar on the second floor, to make use of some prime real estate on the second floor. The police department has no objection to this change, and they're both here if you have any questions to, about this request.
First, do we have any questions for the chief? Petitioners? You have anything you want to add?
I don't know who my question's for. I might have a question for the chief, I don't know.
Okay, Commissioner Macy.
Is it, is it outside this bar?
No, outside.
On the second floor, kind of on the, if you go up the stairs, it's, it's an interior bar. It's an ad bar in the inside. Maybe if you want to explain why you want to put it there.
Welcome, Mr., Mr. Yesbeck.
Thanks for having us, guys.
And I have to preface everything, I think Don wins.
Although mine, I got mine for free, I'm pretty sure someone had to pay Don to wear that. So I don't know how that fits into the equation.
So, in any event, I don't know if you can visualize the upstairs as you walk up the spiral staircase to Tequila Blue, but there's a, a really neat space that, right now, is just a, like a glorified hallway, but it, it's wide and it has almost floor-to-ceiling windows. And right now, they had booths that cover up half the windows. So we thought, I mean, this is one of the nicest aspects of the upstairs. So if we just put high-top tables and allow people to sit there and create kind of a place with it with a, a small, just a, a service bar, basically, to have, you know, be able to get cocktails and not have to get up and go to the bar, and so just kind of create a, a little place, it, it makes the, the, that hallway, like, very relevant and, and I think pretty cool.
Any questions for the petitioners? Commissioner Levaser.
There was a concern expressed a little while ago about the level of music, particularly late at night. Is there something that, that you can do to help out neighbors who may be affected by that sound?
I'm not sure all the sound is coming from this place, because it, it closes before 2:00. I don't think there, there used to be salsa music, we're not, unfortunately, for any salsa lovers, we're not doing salsa anymore. So I don't know, we, we are certainly going to conform to the plan of operation as, as it is stated currently. This, this bar is not going to add any, have any bearing on sound or anything like that. So I, I don't know, maybe the previous operators didn't pay attention to, to what the requirements are of, of the sound and, and turning it off at, at the appropriate times, but we certainly will.
Are the second floor?
Commissioner Gibbs, do we have?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, Commissioner Gibbs.
Are the windows solid, or do they open?
No, solid.
Okay. On the first floor, too?
First floor, actually, yes, sliding.
Okay, that's what I thought, I remembered.
Yes, but the second floor is.
Going to be solid, okay.
First floor has nice piano music.
So, so are you guys taking over the management of Tequila Blue or the Tequila Blue and 526 Main as well?
Both, the whole building.
The whole building, okay.
The whole operation.
All right. I didn't know that.
We're, we're here to help.
Any other questions for the petitioners? Commissioner Dubb.
I'm just curious if the chief is aware of any repeated noise complaints coming from, regarding the building that the new management has made aware of?
Well, I can assure you, there's no music being played after 2:00. As much as I can guarantee something that's, the bar's shut down at 2:00, and our officers make sure that happens. There is another bar across the street that also has open windows, and they have live music there, and sound is a funny thing, but you don't always know where it's coming from. But when both bars are open, it is, it gets loud, but it's, it's definitely shut off at 2:00, and it's not to the level that I'm aware that it's been a problem.
Okay. And there's nothing outdoors, right, like you mentioned? You're not, you're not changing the plan of operation, the bar, everything remains indoors, you're just taking that underutilized space and making it more attractive for visitors to, you know, want to partake in?
In terms of the, the change that we're asking for, yes, that's correct.
Open up that window.
I do believe they have some patio seating during the summer time.
Okay. Okay. All right. Good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Dubb.
I'll move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Dubb, support by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion? Commissioner Dubb.
I'd say these are known operators, and we know that they do their homework. I remember when they, they took the bar at 5th, it was cramped in the front corner, and it was, I think, even like a fire hazard nightmare, and then brought it out and opened the whole space up, and it was a tremendous, like, benefit to, to the space and, and made it a much more open, welcoming place to be. So I trust these operators to do a great job with any kind of remodeling or anything taking place here, so good luck, guys.
Any other discussion? Well, sad, good luck, it's a big endeavor, and, you know, again, best of luck. All right, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. We'll look forward to some bright windows now in the upstairs of Tequila Blue.
It's much more peaceful.
All right, this brings us to item number nine, which is the Police Station Architectural Services. And Mr. Gillum, your name is on this memo, does that mean you're going to kick it off?
That's correct. Mayor and Commissioners, as indicated in my memo, there was a dispute that arose between the city and Partners in Architecture, the architectural firm that is providing services relative to the design and development of the new police station facility. Specifically, there was a request for payment for additional services that was submitted formally to the city back in October, that the city disputed. Members of the staff, working with Plan Moran Cressa, the city's owner's representative on the project, attempted to negotiate a settlement of that dispute in order to keep the, the project moving. They were not able to do so. Over the last couple weeks, my office got directly involved and also met, and, not met, but had conversations with the attorneys for, for Partners in Architecture. And we have reached a, a resolution of the dispute, subject to the approval of the City Commission. As indicated in the memo, at this point, if the Commission agrees, PIA will accept a payment in the amount of $145,000 in settlement of its claim, which originally was over $235,000. If you have other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those, but I would recommend approval of the resolution that's contained in my memo dated December 12th. This will jumpstart the project again. We would expect, if this is, this is approved, that PIA will provide the last set of drawings to the city that we need to be able to actually go out to bid and move the police station project forward.
Questions for Mr. Gillum. Commissioner Macy.
When will those documents be provided, if this is approved tonight?
Discussions I've had with PIA's attorney, they'll be provided to the city tomorrow, so we can be, begin reviewing those and make sure that they're sufficiently detailed enough for us to be able to go out to bid, probably early in January. If, for some reason, they're not sufficiently detailed for us to go out to bid, we will not be obligated to make any payments to PIA until they do provide us with sufficient detail.
Commissioner Perusch.
I'll move approval of this resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Perusch, sir, support, support by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? All right, Commissioner Levaser.
I have some concerns here. It goes to this being a cost overrun on a project, and the city being billed for hundreds of thousands of dollars that, that the commission here never approved. That simply can't be, that, that simply can't happen on an ongoing basis. Any type of expenditure of this nature has to come to this body before a contractor and outside source is obligating the city to, to make payment. I'm troubled by it, it's, it's the taxpayers' funds, and somehow, some way, the city is being obligated without going through the proper channels, going through the proper processes, where, where this body's deliberating on it. So, that said, I, I, I can't support the resolution.
Commissioner Perusch.
That's not how I understand exactly what went down here. The City Commission, a year and a half ago, approved the level of this work that was done by these subcontractors, which were incorporated in the bills and invoices that we have in front of us, at least the summary. It was basically for additional geothermal testing and other architectural work related to things that the commission specifically requested that be done. So the fact that this is just being sprung on us, and this is, has never been discussed or never been approved, that's not accurate. The City Commission was well aware that this work had to be done. Unfortunately, the subcontractor withheld certain invoices and costs from the invoices, the larger invoices that were sent to the contractor. For whatever reason, I'm not sure why that happened, but it wasn't until this year that effectively he said, "Oh, by the way, there's these other things that I just hadn't submitted to you before, that was work that was requested and that was done," and this is the dollar amount. Plan Moran Cressa went over it piece by piece by piece by piece and determined that, in fact, yes, there was 140, whatever this amount is, $145,000 that was authorized by the commission, that was done, but was never invoiced, for whatever reason. And there was a missing amount of fees of this amount, which, in fact, they are, they are owed, because the work was effectively requested and done. So we're at the point now where, because of the dispute between the subcontractor and the contractor, and why those invoices were not completely effectively done at the right time, we don't know, but this is the end result. So the implication that this is, you know, this is new, that the commission never approved it, you know, this is something of a surprise, I'm, I'm sorry, but that's not accurate.
I'll just add to it that, you know, practically speaking, everything Commissioner Perusch said, and practically speaking, you know, we've come to a resolution here, and pushing it further down the road only delays and exasperates the, the project, which continues to create inconvenience for those businesses downtown and other affected parties. We want to make sure this project gets done as quickly as possible, but also to the best possible results, and certainly want to do it and meet the budget. And, you know, again, by pushing this off would exasperate the cost of the project as well. So we're at a point, all the things Commissioner Perusch said, and I think it's time to move forward, get the drawings, and get the bids out there, and stay on task. Commissioner Perusch.
The other thing that I might add is that in this whole discussion and resolution of this problem, we learned a great deal about this subcontractor and about this architectural firm. And we will use that knowledge on a going-forward basis, marry it effectively, to make sure that this doesn't happen again.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Notwithstanding any other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Okay, this brings us to request to amend Downtown Royal Oak LLC 600 Main Development Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Commission. The resolution before you seeks to extend the due diligence period by 180 days in the development agreement that we have between the City of Royal Oak and Downtown Royal Oak LLC. I have attached, as attachment to, the actual request that Downtown Royal Oak LLC made of me, and the justifications for why the, the request should be honored. Namely, from March of this year until a couple of months ago, they had been working pretty diligently with a tenant who subsequently actually moved into the project across the street from here. Maybe more importantly, I've been put in contact with another potential tenant on the project, whose identity I cannot disclose. Needless to say, it's a tenant that everyone in this room knows. Their creditworthiness and their level of interest in the project makes me very comfortable honoring the, the request to extend this period. Their due diligence would end in July of this year, and they would not be able to start construction until after September 9th. I can answer any further questions you have. John Pavone and Larry Goss from the Development Group are also here to answer any questions you may have as well.
Questions for Mr. Fenton. Mr. Pavone, Mr. Goss?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everyone. Yes, we are here before you again. I'm sorry to have to ask for another extension after being told that that might not be possible, but we have a rather unusual set of circumstances that led us to this point. I wanted to make one correction, and that is that the tenant we were dealing with, Henry Ford Health Systems, we actually started dealing with last November, not last March. So it was nearly a year's worth of work that we put into bringing them in. Certainly, there were other factors that had them move from our site to the city center site, and we're happy that they are making such a huge commitment to the city. But nevertheless, we did burn up a significant amount of our due diligence time, and we, we happen to have another very solid potential tenant. We'd like to play this out and see this through and continue to work on our project. We think that 180 days should be sufficient for us to wrap up a deal, if there is one to be made, and given that we wouldn't be starting until after Labor Day, it seems to be a, a fair request. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. I would just mention that the, the tenant is, is highly motivated for their own reasons, and that time is of the essence to this particular tenant. That motivation and the sense of urgency is helping to overcome some of the economic challenges that we have on our site that some of the other sites have not had to overcome. So having a site plan-approved site, as you all know, is one of the things that we did accomplish while we were in our due diligence period, and so that helps to accelerate the process now.
Commissioner Gibbs.
I just have one question, Mr. Goss. You said until after Labor Day, construction, or groundbreaking, anyway, would not begin until after Labor Day. You meant Labor Day 2020, correct?
2019.
So it would be this coming Labor Day?
Correct.
That construction would begin?
That's the, if, if we move forward with this tenant, our expectation would be that they would want to begin construction in 2019, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Douglas.
So is the, your, the site plan that you now have approved, will you be, do you anticipate following that to a substantial degree?
Yes. There may be some modifications, but essentially, we believe that the plan will be followed for the most part.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Levaser.
I, I just want to make sure we're on the same play, same page. Let's say we close early July 2019, and you don't start construction until September 2019. That two-month gap, or, or whatever number, whatever the gap is between closing and construction, will, will the property be available to the public for parking? Will it be available for arts, beats, and eights and other programs? What would, what's your expectation?
Yes, we would leave the property just as it is until after arts, beats, and eights. 2019. 2019, yeah.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I'll move approval of the resolution as submitted.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Support by Commissioner Perusch. Discussion?
I think they've, actually, I, it's Mr. Fenton's word that sells me on this request. His confidence in the prospective tenant and the, the sense of urgency that that tenant has, I'm, and, and I believe that, that these folks have negotiated in good, if slow, faith with us over the past few years, but I'm willing to give them this additional chance to bring that tenant into Royal Oak.
Commissioner Gibbs.
I, I agree, I think this is a great plan, and the future of this section of downtown, you know, would be. be, this would be a huge addition to it. I'm just concerned about the Royal Oak Manor parking and where our seniors are going to be able to park. So, I think that's something that needs to be discussed on our side of the table and with the police chief on where we're going to be able to have them put their cars that it's safe and easy to get to and from their parking lot.
Commissioner Levasseur?
I was not a fan of this proposal when it first came up, and it has nothing to do with the developer. I think the developer is great here. But the problem I have with this is twofold. Number one, I didn't think that the city, the taxpayers, were getting enough funds for the property itself and that we were selling it at less than market value. And number two is the significant concern we have with a shortage of service parking in the city, and this just helps to deplete the service parking and make the problem worse in our city.
Commissioner Dubb?
I have concerns, different than Commissioner Levasseur, and certainly not about the petitioner, who I think we've been operating with in good faith for several years. And I understand that their circumstances have changed throughout the process, and I know they had a very big potential tenant on the hook, that didn't work out. But the reality is our circumstances have changed as well, where we have substantial development going on, which has changed the context in which we're considering this development. And what I'm really struggling with is not really knowing, because we've had this contract on an exclusive agreement for several years, not knowing what and who else is out there and what concepts they might be bringing to the table. So, I'm struggling with continuing to move forward on an idea that, you know, we were kicking around three years ago, given that so much has changed on the city's end. So, I mean, I think I would prefer to see us free up the property, see what other bites there are, and then if this petitioner is still the best possible suitor for that property, move forward then. But I'm not comfortable committing to another 180 days. Would this be our fourth, fifth?
Well, they were prior under exclusivity from 2016 until the development agreement. Actually, the exclusivity elapsed when it was for renewal in December 2017. So, we brought, instead of another exclusivity, we brought the actual development agreement before you in March 19th, and it was approved there. So, this would be the first extension or amendment of that agreement. But I would agree, we've been working with this group for nearly three years.
Exclusively, and that's my concern, and I think the timing has, like I said, I wanted to say anything disparaging about the petitioner, but I think we'd be committing to something that, on the decision that we made much longer ago, things have changed from us. I would like to see what else is potentially out there, including, to Commissioner Levasseur's point, the value of the property, which we did a valuation at the time. Again, that was three years ago. A lot has changed. We have a new Central Park coming online, a new police station, new civic center, the Ekin Building, right? So, that all has changed the circumstances and the context that we're making this decision in, and I would like to see what other ideas might be percolating before committing to moving forward on this. So, I can't support the motion as it is right now, but it's no reflection on the developer and the process that we've followed.
Commissioner Douglas?
I don't know that it's so much a matter of what concepts are out there as it is what tenants are out there. There's a small, finite number of tenants with the interest in a property of this size. And, you know, for us to do away with this agreement and put this property, put their prospective tenant up for grabs to somebody who would then just swoop in and pick them up and, you know, bring them into this property, you know, seems unfair to the developer when, in fact, they do seem to have this tenant pretty securely lined up.
Yeah. I would second that note. I think Commissioner Dubb makes very valid points. A lot has changed. I think I've been the one that voted down a couple times extensions just because of my frustration with not getting any traction. I think where my head is, is exactly where Commissioner Douglas is, is that with Mr. Fenton's analysis of a tenant, a really formidable tenant that has very serious interest, you know, if this, if we didn't have the situation, very positive Henry Ford Health System is coming in, but as it relates to this property, if we didn't have that situation, we'd have a tenant in there right now, perhaps. Or if that never really came on, we might still have a tenant based on this new one. So, I think it's worth, given the size and scale and quality of the potential tenant according to the trust we have in Mr. Fenton, that we give it a shot. But I will say, and I've said this before, and I was right before until the third time, that this would be the last extension that I'll vote for because, and I won't say, it's not a poor reflection. I know you guys have suffered some, you know, ups and downs, but solely on, you know, the analysis that Mr. Fenton can verify that you do have a strong tenant that has peaked interest. So, I'm willing to go out on a limb here for a little bit.
Commissioner Macy?
Something I have a question for Mr. Fenton. As Mr. Fenton knows, I felt sad for the developers when this, when it felt like they had something locked up and then it didn't, went away. But same time, I'm feeling, I'm understanding what Commissioner Dubb is saying, and it's resonating with me pretty strongly, and I'm wondering what exactly changes for the petitioner if we deny the exclusivity agreement?
Well, per the development agreement, this is an exclusivity agreement. Their period for due diligence ends on January 9th. They have 30 days to close. After that, they won't be able to close. The development agreement will essentially be null and void.
But can they not continue working with their potential tenant and bring forward a plan to the City Commission?
They could. As I had said, that that's really probably more of a level of comfort between the developer and the tenant, that they have any sort of right to negotiate any sort of agreement on property that they don't have any property interest in.
Right. If you're the tenant, you're going to say, "You're selling me a concept now. You have no development agreement to actually purchase this from the city and turn it into the building that I need to reside in." It's not an exclusivity, it's the development agreement, the thing that motivates tenants to step in.
Commissioner Dubb?
One other point I would raise is that, you know, we have been overly successful in our downtown strategy of attracting Class A office space. This would go well above and beyond what we originally targeted, which is, again, going back to the point of, is this aligned with the current strategy or a strategy we already succeeded and we're piling on with, with Class A office space? I think that we've talked in strategic planning about what we need as a city going forward. We've achieved the Class A office space goal. I think we need to consider, is this the highest and best use of the property? And we're not able to consider that if we continue down this path.
Commissioner Macy?
Feeling very torn. Is there a split-the-baby possibility here, a 90-day development agreement?
It's not what the motion on the table is. Commissioner Douglas, you might have thoughts on that?
Well, I just, I wanted to parenthetically add that when we talk about highest and best use for property, surface parking isn't it.
Agreed. I'm not saying that.
So, to not, to say we're not going to develop this property or contemplate that just because we want to improve vast spaces of vacant lots is not where I see us go.
And this property, a part of the development agreement, has marquee retail on the first floor as well, which is part of our goal.
Commissioner Perusch?
It seems to me that if this developer has identified a tenant and the tenant is enthusiastic about this project as he or she, or whatever it is appears to be, it means that that tenant wants to be close to Downtown Royal Oak, which is exactly why Henry Ford came to this building here. They want to be right in downtown, they want to be as close to it as possible. Henry Ford is developing, has a lengthy list of employees who would love to come and work in this facility, more than they can ever fit in the building. And I have a feeling that the tenant that they're talking to is in exactly the same position. They're looking for a location in Royal Oak because Royal Oak is as attractive as it is right now. My fear, and it's something that was mentioned earlier, is that if we say no to this developer tonight, then it opens the door wide for another developer to come in and snatch that tenant. And I, my sense of fairness says that's not fair. That's just not fair. These developers have been working on this project in one form or another for a long period of time, and I think they deserve the opportunity to keep a hold of this tenant and move forward with this development, with this extension that they need. And I think opening the door by saying no to them and letting the tenant have free rein to scramble to anybody else that might hold out better economic terms or goodness knows what all else in order to snag them and then present to us an alternative proposal, to me, just offends my sense of fairness. I just don't think that that's fair at all. So, that's where I come down on this. I, too, was very uncomfortable permitting yet another extension. We've all been uncomfortable with that at the time, but the perspective, the prospect of getting a really good tenant in this building is convincing me that this is the way we should go right now.
Any other comments? Commissioner Douglas?
I will just, I thought came to me that if this fish is out there and they don't have a development deal, the fish, the tenant then sits in the driver's seat and entertains and negotiates with every significant developer around town, further driving down the rent, further forcing that developer into seeking concessions from us to be able to, you know, make the profit that they seek.
Anything else? All right, we have a resolution in front of us to extend the development agreement by 180 days. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion passes. 180 days and zero minutes and zero seconds, gentlemen.
[laughing].
All right, that brings us to item number 11, the special event permit, Royal Oak Unity Fair, June 20th through the 23rd. June, okay, this date looks unusual here. June 20th through the 12th, is it like a Back to the Future type of?
Well, Mayor, I've actually got an updated special event permit. Maybe I'll hand this out. The Police Department was asked to expedite this special event request, and we did that. And in the process, because of that, a few of the details weren't really ironed out. What was put on as a placeholder on the agenda, we've kind of fine-tuned that within the Police Department. Mr. Witz is here, so if we get anything wrong, I'm sure he's going to speak up. But I'll just run over what the request is right now, and this is for a unity fair to be located in, basically, the main lots there off Main Street. The event will go from June 20th to June 23rd. It'll feature a family-friendly gathering intended to bring together many of the churches, synagogues, mosques, and other houses of worship, in addition to various school organizations in Royal Oak and nearby communities. The event will require a $5 entry fee per person and will feature carnival rides, some food, alcohol and non-alcoholic beverages, two stages for live music, some arts and crafts and other family-friendly values. I think the main draw of the event will be carnival rides. Like I said, it will be open to the general public on Thursday. A kind of little, little bit of a reduced footprint will open on Thursday from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And then there will be no music on Thursday. On Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, it'll have a larger footprint, and it'll go from 11:00 to 11:00, but shut down at 10:00 on Sunday. The, uh...
The event will have?
A protected footprint, so alcohol will be able to be consumed within the entire event footprint. There is, I guess, the biggest question, or one of the questions today, is the ask regarding what our normal charges are and then what the petitioner is asking today, and it's a little bit different than written in the memo there. In speaking with the petitioner, what we normally do, whenever there's a request for city property, we charge a flat rate of $15 per meter for all the meters. The applicant is requesting some relief on that. In fact, I've got a note here somewhere, bear with me. The event wants to pay a maximum of $8,489 just to round up for meter reimbursement. The event organizer believes that is, I'm not articulating this very well, let me start from the beginning. How about total, total cost for all the meters is $21,487.50 for all the meters. Our expected cost for police department, for public safety, officers to staff the events, $8,511, and then DPW services is expected to be about $500, for a total of $30,498. The event organizer agrees to pay all the public safety costs and public service costs, but the, is requesting to pay significantly less for the meters. The event organizer will also be seeking additional sponsorship from the DDA to the amount, I think he's here to talk about that. We did do a check on four days of those lots and how much revenue those lots actually bring in, and for four days, they'll bring in about $4,344, which is significantly less than the $15 per space per day. Hopefully, that's not clear as mud, but there's a, I've included, is just kind of an outline of the footprint and how it'll extend open, extend on Friday. There's two different maps there. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions for the chief. Commissioner Levasseur?
Just to clarify on the parking, the $4,000-some-dollar number you gave us was for the service lots, not the street parking?
Correct.
Do we have numbers on what that street parking would bring in during this time?
No, because that's gauged differently. They don't, the individual meters aren't tracked that way, but...
Yeah, because we have the pay stations on those lots.
On those lots, yes.
We can track it a little bit better. You don't know when people are putting, we don't empty the meters every day to really understand or account for each meter every day.
And if my math is right, it's a total of 111 street meters, and that would be about $4,995 if it's $15 per day, per meter.
Other questions for the chief? Commissioner Gibbs?
I have some concern about the standing businesses, the operating businesses. Are they going to, are their patrons going to have to pay the $5 charge to enter or walk through and pay additional parking for going to a restaurant or going to go shopping?
Well, the only area, the only area that would be, I guess, enclosed would be just on Fifth Street, because the footprint is just the, where those three lots are, is the main footprint. So, well, you know, I'm sorry, that would be also down Sixth Street also. So, there would be some businesses there that would be affected. I suspect that the, would be able to work out passes for the employees to get to their place of business, but...
Okay, but it looks to me from this picture that Seventh Street is blocked off, too, with games and food trucks and...
Seventh Street, but there's no businesses between those.
Oh, there's no businesses there, okay.
Parking lots.
It's parking.
Oh, okay. It's hard to tell from this picture.
Commissioner Perusch?
I have a question, but it might be more appropriately directed to Mr. Witz. I got contacted, but someone...
I got contacted, but someone who I ran into at the credit union early this morning from the DDA, who indicated that the request for the $35,000 hasn't really gone through all their channels effectively yet. And he requested that perhaps this be put on hold for a meeting so that the DDA can have a little bit more input into this. He felt like he, you know, was hearing about this, you know, kind of by looking at the agenda and not really understanding, you know, exactly what the DDA's role and what the request is going to be. So, he kind of requested that, until that happens, that we postpone dealing with this. That's what happened this morning.
Mr. Witz, maybe you can approach.
So, the, there was a sense of urgency here. The background for this is this is a carnival that was at the River Days Festival. River Days, again, it's off the record if there were, it's impossible to do that, but they are, River Days is likely moving off of GM property. The carnival cannot sit on the grounds of the West Riverfront. That operator needs to know immediately, or because they are losing the space that they've been in. I've let the Business Marketing Committee know of the DDA. They are taking it to the DDA for a vote and discussion. That's going to be discussed there. The presentation's going to be made in fairness. And the event, you know, next month, might not be available to have. So, I think it's a great positive opportunity with many upsides and very minimal investment to draw, you know, thousands of people to the downtown, families, and I think the crowd that most businesses will, you know, will want to see there. So, it's possible that it could be available, but there's a good chance that it wouldn't be available next month. So, that's the answer to that. And, you know, I think the DDA as a whole get to hear the merits of everything and all sides of it. And there'll be a full discussion on Wednesday. And it was vetted through a marketing committee, and that marketing committee is bringing it to the DDA for a discussion and a vote on Wednesday, so we can get an answer and try and make this happen. And, again, I have a decent amount on my plate, so if it, this is something that I just saw was a great opportunity to build something fun around, unlike most events. You know, we're going to try and raise $30,000 to $50,000 for church and school organizations around the communities. We have a track record of, you know, exceptional community investment and involvement. And then, again, with regard to business disruption, I'm sure there are some pathways, you know, we can do that's unlike Art's Beats and Eats to create a sidewalk walking path down Sixth Street, maybe not Fifth, but Sixth and some of the smaller retail business in Oak City Grill, we can probably actually barricade a walkway to those businesses. And we were thinking maybe a zip line down Sixth Street. So, I think we can potentially create that attraction and that fence line without affecting those businesses as well as the ones that are in the lot at the corner of Washington that has the hair salon there and the printing business as well. I can assure you that from experience, the businesses on Fifth Street will hugely benefit from the crowds that we would have and the music and the attraction, as is done with the event that we do on Labor Day that benefits Fifth Street. Those businesses have their best weekends of the year. And I believe there is no retail there, it is all bar and restaurant. But, I could easily be corrected by anybody here. There might be, you know, again, but if it's a retail place like a hair place that's on the corner of Washington, there's a way we can structure the walkway to get into that. But, the bars and restaurants are going to have a thoroughly better weekend than a normal weekend. I mean, just from my experience there. So, there is a sense of urgency, and I would ask the body to allow approval tonight. And the DDA will have the ability to, you know, have the same, you know, chance. If they feel like, you know, it's not proper to have a decision, then, you know, then that would be decided on Wednesday. But, I would ask this body for, you know, for approval. And I'm certainly willing to make a statement on the parking situation as well, if, because I have a thought on that. But, I don't know, I haven't been asked that question, so.
Commissioner Douglas.
So, to understand, I would have asked the chief this, but you're here, so I'll ask you. So, your proposal is to pay, so the meters on these three lots would ordinarily take in $21,000 over this period?
Uh, 43, 44.
Our rental fee is $15 per meter. Multiplied out is $21,000. When they did a check of, what I understand, when they did a check of the rates that we get for this period, it was around $4,300, you said?
That's how much the lots would generate over a four-day period that he would-
And there would be 170 meters in the lots versus 111 meters, if you said, are in the sidewalks. So, the lot meters $4,300, you'd have to figure that the street meters, by definition, would be, you know, less than the lots by, you know, nearly 50%. And the case that I would make about that, in addition to the economic impact we think we would bring, which would be in the tens of thousands of dollars, a community benefit, which would be there, you'd have to look at the fact, too, that if we had, you know, 30,000 or 40,000 people come in over the weekend, that's going to hugely enhance your parking revenue at other parking decks. I mean, there's going to be a market increase well beyond the money that we're talking about, you know, from a parking standpoint. In addition, I heard Commissioner Levasseur was concerned about parking, you know, not being available. I would just state that the new parking deck will be done by that time and available. And also, OCC, we've been in contact with them, and there was a very strong willingness to support us with use of their lot if needed, if we felt there was needed. And I think the discussion of parking will be an ongoing one. I think there's options to raise the level of parking by $2, which would bring in even more revenue in some of the decks that might be closest to the event, or not to do that. But, I think that's a discussion that the city and the DDA can have to just retain the best revenue with the least impact to other operations and just make sure it's a win-win situation. And that's, you know, an area where we would love to be at the table and offer opinion and, obviously, advertise. One of the things we do do well with our events is advertise, this would be no different. So, we would get a lot of people coming to the website for this. We would direct people to the parking that the city asks us to direct them to and promote those lots and rates in a way to, you know, to enhance the parking revenue overall. But, I wish I would have known how low the parking revenue was, I would have maybe asked for better. But, just in a case, and I don't say that jokingly, because the overall investment in the event, from our perspective, is going to be $150,000 of investment into the program. Electrician security, we'll have our own private security. We've already told the chief that if he feels during the course of the process that more Royal Oak security or police are needed to support the event, that we would cover those costs at our expense, whatever is dictated, as we, you know, have a longstanding relationship with the chief and the city on how to work together between law enforcement, public security, and impeccable, you know, track record of not having incidents at the events that I've been involved in. And this would be, you know, run and operated at the same level of care, caution, and, you know, in preparation.
Ms. Macy, Commissioner Macy.
So, you're going to go in front of the DDA on Wednesday. If, I saw that you're asking for DDA sponsorship of this event, is this event dependent on that sponsorship occurring?
Definitely, both of, I need guesses on both situations to move forward, just because we still, on our side, we probably still have $50,000, $60,000 of sponsorship to rein in. And understand the revenue of a carnival, so just so you guys know, what's happening here is that 70% of that revenue goes to the carnival, that's how they function. So, that leaves 30%. Of that 30%, we're giving 10% of that revenue to split between the church and school organizations as a back-end win. So, we're dealing with 20% of the ride revenue and 50% of the admission revenue, which we don't, you know, know exists, because a lot of, I mean, $5 is a low amount, but it's still, the idea of it is to create it as a fundraising, you know, situation opportunity. So, half of that gate money is going to churches and school organizations. So, it's not like we need to raise money for this. And, you know, so the, what we've asked from the DDA, of that $35,000, we're applying $17,500 for, to reimburse the city for its costs. And then, we are using $2,500 for EMS, because the cost of an ambulance from the city is more than it would cost us to get a private ambulance. And the chief has said it's okay for us with a carnival. I want to have a private ambulance there just as a precaution. And then, we'd also have EMS that would be private as well, that would be in advanced meetings with the city. So, $2,500 would go to those costs. And then, we'd have $15,000 to use towards sponsorship, which is only 10% of our rural budget. So, we're raising the majority, you know, vast majority of the money outside of the city. You know, the city's investment from between DDA and support, you know, represents 20% of the overall cost of the event. And I think the impact to the city will be gained in parking alone, let alone the economic impact of having 30,000, you know, people, you know, walking through the downtown, which is the goal of this. And we're not asking for more than one year. You know, it's a new concept, see how it goes, and come back to the table. And there might not be a lot to host us on, and there might be a different location as we, you know, that, you know, might not, might work, or it might be so good that we pick another part of the city to do this in. So, I think there's a lot of, you know, a lot to see on a one-year trial basis to retain the ability to use it, so.
Commissioner Dubout. Oh, wait, you're not finished? Okay, Commissioner Macy.
Well, you just answered my other question, which was that you're asking for a one-time event. And I understand there's some urgency to this, but it's just for this year, and then you'll reconsider. We'll talk about it again after that if it's-
Right, I think we both, I think we need to see if we come out, the churches and schools need to feel, you know, good about it. You guys will need to feel good about it, the chief will need to be able to feel good about it, city manager will need to feel good about it, and DDA is going to need to feel good about it. And, you know, we'll see how that goes, but you have many things going. The carnival's a very high-end carnival as it goes, as far as safety record, presentation of employees. It's one we've worked with for years. Minor incidents, they've been the River Days Carnival in Detroit for 12 years without incident. And, you know, so that's a good situation. We have a great track record, marketing and promoting it, so I think, and operations with the city. We have a good reputation. So, I think there's a lot of stuff that could be unknowns if you were dealing with someone else, but this will be well-promoted, and we'll only move forward if we're funded properly as well.
And my last is just a suggestion. This is right around the time of graduation, and since it's a church and school event, it would be really nice if there were incentives for our Royal Oak High School students and for the OCC grads.
Yes, I would, and I will say that, too. We won't charge more than five, but if the five isn't working and we, you know, and just to give you an example, how we're going to create community wins, I mean, this is just stuff that always is inherent in our events. But, we're going to do a program for kids on the autism spectrum on Thursday. We're going to do other special needs programs on Thursday. We've already talked to the Boys and Girls Club about creating ways for kids that might not have the ability to afford to come if they're not sponsored through a church organization. That's a lot of what Thursday is for, is to use the capital of Thursday to create a lot of goodwill. And I think to your suggestion, if there is a squirrel group or a graduation party that we can offer even half off, you know, for participating, or $2 a graduate as an incentive, the admission fee is there to, for a small amount of money to help with expenses, but also as a fundraising vehicle. So, negotiating off of that is open and flexible. We assure you it won't be more. We assure you that church groups and school groups will get half of the money on the tickets they sell. But, do we do other discounts and incentives or other things just to get people into the downtown? Yes, we need the, we need people to make this work for you guys and for us, so.
Mr. Macy, any more additional follow-up questions? Your interrogation is complete. Commissioner Dubout.
So, two questions. I mean, obviously, you know, we know, you and Mr. Witz, you're on our marquee event of the year. You're doing something new, is a little bit different. One thing, so if the carnival's the primary draw, one of the things I hear about Art's Beats and Eats is folks would really love to be able to buy day passes.
Answer is yes.
Day passes.
Well, I thought you meant all-day ride passes.
Yes.
Yes.
All-day ride passes.
That'll be the premier item sold, will be all-day passes for the-
Okay, I know that would make families feel a lot better than-
Yep, $20 a band is what we do in Detroit historically. So, that would be the, that'll give all the rides all day, you know, and they can even leave and come back. Those are the cases, so.
All right, that's a huge plus. And secondly, I know you're talking about the potential positive impact. I know that, you know, I think most of us recognize the very positive impact of Art's Beats and Eats, but we have with a few folks who have been before. So, for new events in the recent past said, you know, we won't kind of want the proof of concept before we invest in it and subsidize the leasing of the public space. And it's not that large a price tag, and I'm wondering if that's something that you're, you know?
I'm not negotiable to it, and I don't say that with any arrogance. It's that we're, this is new and fresh, and I feel like we're paying fair costs. I feel like you're delivering, I will do things like guarantee you guys a $30,000 marketing campaign that mentions the city of Royal Oak. I will add that to the agreement, or things that we do that other folks don't do as well, which is, you know, market our events and make sure that the city is reflected in a lot of positive publicity. We'll have a PR firm that works on this, we'll have media partners that work on this. You know, there are things that I think transcend the fact that this is a new event when you have the pieces in place that, you know, we bring to the table when we do an event from experience. And again, we've operated this carnival successfully. Part of the pattern is after the Orchard Lake St. Mary's Fair, in the sense that, you know, that's a huge fundraiser for that one organization. However, we want to make this a fundraising event for a lot of organizations who can do small projects either within the church or the community or the school organization, get the hockey uniforms they need, or take that trip to another city and create those small wins that these organizations need, yet have these organizations do no work. Orchard Lake St. Mary, they have 250 parents that have to put tons of hours into the event to do it, and none of these organizations will have to work at it. They'll have a professional outfit that will create the whole atmosphere for them and deliver a chance to fundraise. And again, I think we're missing one of the great points of this, is the whole idea, too, is to bring faith and denominations together of, you know, of all backgrounds. And that's one of the big themes that we'll be talking about, that I think is bigger than the fact that it's a carnival, is that, you know, we'll have different church denominations faith, face in our community coming out, and all having the opportunity to hang out together in what has been a really dang divisive, you know, year in the last couple of years that we've had. And that's one of the themes that we really want to promote with this. And there'll be more than a carnival, there'll be a kid's stage, there'll be strolling entertainers. We want to add a zip line on Sixth Street as long as Mr. Johnson is the first to go down. And then, and then-
I don't know if we have matured for that.
And then, we will also have, you know, a nice entertainment stage for adults in the evening. And one of the things, a late change we did do in respect to Commissioner Gibbs's concern is we did modify Thursday night so that we do not touch Fifth Street, Center Street, Sixth Street. Everything will be condensed on Thursday, which means nothing will go on those streets and setups all the way till Thursday at 11:00 p.m. So, that was something that, in anticipation of that kind of question and others, that was a way to just pare it down and soften that impact. But, we're, as I said, we will, if you give us in the agreement, we can put in some language that we can discuss some pathways, which we normally don't do at Art's Beats and Eats, create some barricade, like from Washington to Sixth, to walk down all the way through those businesses that are on the north side of Sixth Street. I think that would be a nice solution, yes.
I have a follow-up question. So, is it your intention, or would it be our intention, should this go through, to allow you to block off the parking lots and the meters, or you would be renting them essentially, from Tuesday afternoon, I think it was, on, yeah, Tuesday afternoon, on, for the entire week?
Correct, just the surface lots, the streets would not be touched, so.
Okay, so the meters would still theoretically be open for businesses?
No.
No.
No, the meters on the streets would be, but not the meters in the parking lots, because we would be building the rides, yeah.
The street meters, I, I'm sorry, I-
Yeah, the street meters would be 100% open.
Okay.
We're just going to put food trucks or build stages or things that all can be done overnight between, you know, the end of the night on Thursday by the time we open on Friday.
Okay.
Commissioner Bruce.
When we have Art's Beats and Eats, we have a problem with overflow parking in the neighborhoods, and so we close a lot of those streets to non-residents. This isn't going to be that big. But, on the other hand, things like Rib Fest, when they're down in that area, sometimes do have significant overflow parking in the neighborhoods. And this is, I'm just throwing out this question to the commission. Do we think that we need to talk about restricting overflow parking in the neighborhoods, like for Art's Beats and Eats, or is this not big enough to consider that? And the chief is looking imitally, just like, oh, dear, permits and all that kind of stuff. So, but, that's a question that I'm thinking about. I don't know if anybody has any reaction to that?
I mean, I think that, I think the good benchmark is Rib Fest that you mentioned. And, yeah, there is a little bit of bleed over into the residential areas. I think a lot of the streets anyways in that particular area do have permit parking only. a lot of the streets anyways in that particular area do have permit parking only, um, just because they've applied for it for the normal downtown traffic that you get on a full capacity like a Friday or Saturday night.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think with arts, beats and eats, you're bringing in 300,000 to 400,000 people. At least you plan to, you know, if it rains a little bit, maybe it doesn't push 400, you're more closer to three. Uh, and I think that, um, you know, with that sort of crowd, I think folks do seek out, and it's a beautiful summer day, they'll, or fall day, they'll walk, you know, three or four blocks. I think we'll have some bleed, but, um, I think that's tempered a little bit by the fact that we don't have a multi-year contract here. It's sort of a one-time thing. Um, and I think a lot of folks coming to this will be from the congregations from Royal Oak, and to the extent that you're not just buying a ticket at the door, but the pre-sale tickets direct people to the efficient and effective parking in our parking garages and things like that might also temper that a little bit. Uh, but it is a concern. I think you will have some. And we're not charging $15. That's a good point, uh, city manager.
Three and five, yeah. We'd be, I mean, and even the, the DDA has even said that they, um, you know, just, uh, and I think Jay Dunson wouldn't mind me quoting him, that he, that, you know, his, one of his points that he'll be making on Wednesday is that, um, he would be in favor of not raising the parking and just working with Don on seeing what the incremental revenue is and having that be an internal discussion between the DDA and the city. Um, so I think there's a case to be made for maybe a $2 increase. And again, this would not be, this is just a suggestion, or no increase, as I think the body language of Mr. Johnson just.
Yeah, I think people have to walk further.
Trying to interpret your body language for many years, so.
Don has body language?
Occasionally. He controls his body language better than I control mine, so.
See, that's why we put bells on him, just so we could tell what his body's doing. For those who can't see on TV, Don Johnson's shirt has bells on it, his sweater. It's very festive. All right. Any, any other questions for Mr. Witz? Okay, we'll bring the conversation back up here. Thank you for, uh, sticking around, Mr. Witz. Commissioner Douglas?
I do have a further question for the chief. You, I, I think I am correct in my assumption that you have to kind of ride the, ride gain on the overtime that your officers desire between the need to get people's vacations scheduled and just manage schedules with the challenges that you have, you know, keeping and retaining officers. Is this a good thing or a bad thing?
I think the way, um, city manager and I talk about is special event fatigue and how it affects the department. I, I think, in a nutshell, the, this is overtime for the officers. We don't make any of the guys who are normally scheduled work it. It's all overtime. That way, we don't have to, no one's getting denied a vacation to hold this event. Um, we changed that a number of years ago. Uh, there, there's costs beyond the overtime of the officers that we don't really bill because we manage them. We, there's supervisors who have to have this on their mind. So, um, it, to, for us, for the individual line officers, I think they'd prefer to have overtime options available to them. Simple as that. For the department as a whole, the more events we have, the more of a burden it is, and we're managing it, but it's, we haven't heard if Rib Fest wants to come back. Uh, I would suspect that next year we'll have some more special events for June, but, right now, it's, it's manageable, I guess, is the simplest answer.
You're saying that to be nice, or?
Well, it's, it's hard to know when to say no, because when you just kind of, one more thing, yeah, we can swing it. Yeah, we can swing it. But I, I think we can, it, we can handle it, yes.
Commissioner Bruce?
The Clay and Glass Show, but it's been renamed, is June 8th and 9th, which is a Saturday and Sunday? So that's at the beginning of the month? I don't know if you were aware of that.
We are. Um, it's, the sergeant handles this, has a calendar up with all the events that are in there, the ones that, we know they apply late, so we try to avoid conflicts. Clay and Glass really isn't a big lift for us. That's pretty, pretty easy.
No, it's much less than this would be, for sure. But it is, it is on the calendar.
It is there, yep.
Okay.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay. We have a proposed.
You don't have.
No, any proposal.
There's a resolution on the handout I gave you.
Yes, it's not online. We have a proposed resolution offered up as it relates to, uh, the Unity Fair in front of us. Commissioner Macy?
Move approval of the resolution?
Motion by Commissioner Macy, support by Commissioner LaVassar. Discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
Uh, I've said this before, I'll say it again. I like events. I think events are good for the city. I think the promotional value we get out of the marketing budgets that Mr. Witz spends, um, benefit us and make people want to move to and live in our city. But I am, I am sensitive to the, the issues of the police department. So I'm going to vote for this, but I'm going to say that anything else that comes knocking on, I mean, John's here now, anything that comes knocking on our door, um, in 2019, I'm going to be very reluctant to approve.
Yeah, I'll second those sentiments. Um, I think for me, I see, you know, uh, an opportunity here. We, we kind of have some self-resolution with the parking. I think we're going to bring in lots of people. We're going to advertise Royal Oak. We're going to kick off the summer, bringing in 30, 40,000 people that are going to park in our garages and, you know, matriculate themselves throughout the city as they make their way towards the south part of town, which means they're going to walk by neighborhood businesses and downtown businesses and see all the great new businesses, uh, that have popped up in Royal Oak, and also visit some of our longstanding favorites. So I think it's actually a right-sized event. But I also share the sentiment of, um, the mayor pro tem with, uh, you know, this is really getting into crunch time between the Dream Cruise, Arts, Beats and Eats, um, and we want to make sure that, uh, the folks that keep us safe are well-rested and, uh, safe and, and so they can keep us safe. So, um, again, it's not a long-term contract. We can try it out. We did Rib Fest before. Um, you know, we've had events during this time period, so I'll be supporting it. With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Good luck with your second meeting, John. The, uh, last item on our agenda are the Appointment Committee recommendations. Who was the chair? Commissioner Macy was the chair of the last Appointments Committee recommendation, or you'll at least take the lead on this one?
Yes, I was the chair and will take the lead. Uh, this was a epic meeting. It took over two hours, and there were lots of appointments to be made, and we had a lot of applicants. A very long, very thick stack of applications that we were shuffling through as we did this. Um, and probably as part of that, there are some corrections that we would like to propose or that I would like to propose today.
Okay.
Um, so one of them is that, um, part of what we talked about at the Appointments Committee meeting was that, um, when there are people who have been term limited out of their committee, respective committee, there's, there's a limit of how many terms you can serve before you're term limited. And at that point, the commission has to make a special resolution to reappoint them on the board. And so for the most part, we were not reappointing those people who are term limited to spread the wealth among the, all the applicants that we had. Uh, and in some of these cases, you can see there are some reappointments. We had received information that indicated that there was special expertise and experience required for those boards and that it was appropriate to reappoint those individuals. Um, and since this meeting, it has come forward that, um, for the Historic District Study Committee, Tamis Donaldson had reached her term limit, and so we did not reappoint her. And then we heard from members of the committee, the chair of the committee, that she's an architect, and they need an architect on that committee. So, uh, we'd like to propose having, reappointing Tamis Donaldson to the Historic District Study Committee in the spot of Crystal Chow, and here's where we're doing some fancy footwork, and then having Crystal Chow move to the Parks Recreation and Senior Services Advisory Board in the spot of A. Zoe Harris. So A. Zoe Harris was someone we appointed to two boards, two commissions and boards as we were doing this. Um, and I happen to know that she's going to show up at Parks and Rec and Senior Services regardless, because her daughter is the student member on that board. Um, so she is there and participates. So the reshuffling we're proposing is for Tamis Donaldson to take the place of Crystal Chow in the Historic District Study Committee, to have Crystal Chow take the place of A. Zoe Harris in Parks Recreation and Senior Services Advisory Board. Got all that. And then next, for the 2020 Complete Count Committee, um, when we received our packet, it said that there were going to be four members, or five members appointed to that committee, and we were operating from that. And then we found out from the clerk's office that in fact there was no limit to the number of people that we could appoint to that committee. Um, and so at that moment, we're like, oh, well, you know, we have 17 applicants for this committee. We might as well put them all on this committee. That's what we did. Um, since that time, we have found out that one of the applicants, uh, the references that were on the application for that, for that applicant, did not realize that they were the references for that applicant. And upon further inquiry, very strongly recommended that this applicant not be placed on this committee would be disruptive. So for that reason, I would also propose removing Brian Ellison from the 2020 Complete Count Committee. And that is the changes I suggest.
And I will move those changes. Are those, uh, do we want to do this all at once?
We can't.
Reappointments, vacancies, do it all at once?
I thought we had to do it separately.
Separate. Okay.
Reappointments, vacancies.
All right. So I will move the, um, reappointments.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, support by Commissioner Macy. Commissioner LaVassar?
Just to clarify, uh, with regard to the reappointments, are we including Tamis Donaldson there, or just those that's on our list?
So she is list the.
So she's not on there, so she should be included in.
Yes, I'm, yes, adding Tamis Donaldson to the reappointments list.
All right. Is that one that we need a special resolution on, or?
Oh, actually, so she's not, so she should be on the, the final resolution, because she's a reappointment who's been term limited.
I don't think she was term limited. I think she was.
No, she was, right?
Was she termed?
Yeah, because we reappointed everyone who we could reappoint without term limits.
So, so if I look at it right here under the reappointments, it says, be it resolved, the city commission hereby makes the following reappointments, recognizing the appointees are currently term limited. However, the special expertise may, or and experience required for these particular boards and committees make it essential they remain in place. And then you start with, um, Beverly Foss, Terrence O'Rourke, and so that would be the addition down there, because essentially what you did is you moved the appointment of this position up to a new appointment above, and you're moving that down to a reappointment. Right?
So there's three sections. There's the regular reappointments at the top, which are not term limited. There's the vacancies. And then at the bottom, there's reappointments of the people who have been term limited and, or for whom we have to make a special resolution, resolution that they have special expertise. Oh, Melanie?
Tamis was not term limited.
I didn't think so.
Oh. She did want to stay on the committee. And it doesn't say that that was, that she was term limited.
Maybe we got better.
Yeah, we might have, there must, must have been some miscommunication. Okay. Well, in that case, she stays in this resolution, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So she would stay with the first group of reappointments?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And I am moving those reappointments with her addition.
Okay.
Still second.
All right. So clarity. My mistake. I was getting to the bottom versus the top where it said reappointments. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
So then, moving on to the vacancies, um, I move to appoint, actually, we're going to, Ruth Cleveland will wind up in a new position, not as a termed-out reappointment.
She's definitely, she's down here as a reappointment, termed out.
So we've got Crystal Chow on the Historic District Study Committee as a new appointment. So we're just not going to newly appoint her?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Well, we will newly appoint her to the Parks Rec and Senior Services Board in place of A. Zoe Harris. And so I, I will move that along with all of the other listed vacancies. Oh, and omitting Brian Ellison from the Census Committee.
Second.
And I do, I was raising my hand for a second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, and we have a support by Commissioner Macy. Sorry, Commissioner Gibbs?
I have a question. Um, is there somebody to replace Brian Ellison to be appointed? Or my recollection?
I think it was everybody on the list.
I think that was everybody on the list. Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
This committee, my understanding, has the ability to appoint members itself, right? To add to its own committee.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
So it can continue to grow.
Okay.
Okay. Um, we have a motion on the table. There was some discussion tonight about the Environmental Advisory Board?
That's below.
Okay. All right. All right. Any discussion? Commissioner LaVassar?
I want to get a little clarification from the city attorney. I know when we formed the senior task force, we set aside one position for, to be a person that was appointed by the Parks and Recs. And is that something by resolution, something that we can easily change at this table? Or do we need, uh, to, to do anything special in order to make that change?
If that provision was made by resolution at this table, it can be changed by resolution at this table also.
All right. Okay. Uh, and the reason I ask, all right, Jeff Plachta, I, I believe his passion is the senior task force. I, I, I don't know that the Parks and Recs Committee is as much his passion. Uh, but, but I think there, there could be some value here in separating that out, keeping him on the senior task force, opening up the Parks and Recreation
spot for another person. Uh, and specifically, I, I would make a motion to amend that we allow Jeff Plachta to remain on the senior task force, but replace him on the Parks and Recreation with Linda Tumala.
Okay, we have a proposed amendment to the resolution, or to the motion by Commissioner LaVassar. Is there support?
I'll second that.
Support by Commissioner Gibbs. Discussion, Commissioner Douglas?
Just a, a legal question. By doing this, we are, we're changing another separate resolution within the body of the Appointments Action, and I'm wondering if we can do that? I mean, I mean, what we're saying is that the earlier resolution, um, requiring that there be a Parks Rec seniors person on the senior task force is still in place. Can we change that with this, you know, move the pen?
If we're talking about filling, filling a, an opening on the committee, yes, you can. If you're, if you're not pulling somebody off in midterm, so to speak, I don't think there's any problem with making a change.
So, so the resol, this will, in effect, will go, you will go back and rewrite the resolution that established the senior task force? Because the senior task force has to have a representative from Parks and Rec. And if we, by what Commissioner LaVassar has described, we will be removing the person, the Parks and Rec representative on that committee. Are you assuming that we would then find another Parks and Rec person to serve on the, except I think the senior services task force is finite?
I, I'm not making any type of assumption like that. Uh, I, I'm simply suggesting that Mr. Plachta remain on the senior task force, that he not be removed from that, uh, but that we, uh, break that off so that there doesn't have to be that membership on both committees to serve on the senior task force.
Commissioner Douglas's point is that then Parks and Rec and Senior Services Advisory Board won't be represented on that body, on the senior task force body, unless we add another member to that.
Well, unless you, you expect that, that Jeff Plachta can represent the interests of this, of the Parks and Recreation. So, you know, he, he was chosen by Parks and Recreation. I, I don't know that we have to require that the person chosen by Parks and Recreation be a sitting member on Parks and Recreation.
But I think that's what the resolution says.
So, so here's the deal, um, in my opinion. We have the entire Appointments Committee on the side of the table. There are probably discussions that could have taken place at the Appointments meetings that you guys had.
It was epic.
It was epic, I hear. Um, my challenge is, I feel like with this amendment, we're trying to rewrite a couple different ordinances. We're talking about what our strategy was or is or should be for the senior advisory committee. We already baked that out months ago, and now we're here to fill in vacancies with these appointments. And I feel like we're mixing a lot of things in an amendment. And out of consideration, I don't even know... it, has the proposed Ms. Tumala applied? I mean, I don't even know if you guys had a chance to look, call references, do whatever here on the spot. So I don't know how fair it is, you know, to kind of do that, uh, here within an amendment. But, um, that's just my opinion. Right now, I think we're overly complicating this thing, but, um, I think it, Commissioner Dubb, then Commissioner Prush.
Tom, basically what this motion would do is, this, the previous, uh, Appointments Committee had put Mr. Plechta on Parks and Rec. They chose him to be their representative on the Senior Task Force. Has there been a conversation with him where he alluded to not being interested in serving on Parks and Rec?
The problem was, he missed too many committee meetings, Parks and Rec committee meetings. Uh, and he sent us a, sent the clerk, which came to us, uh, an email explaining the fact that, um, when he was appointed to the Senior Task Force, um, he didn't realize that that was contingent on his service on the Parks and Rec, um, uh, committee. Um, he's very engaged in the Senior Services. He's the chair of the task force. Um, he understands now the import, the importance of him fulfilling his, um, attendance obligations on both bodies and is prepared to meet that requirement.
Okay. Commissioner Prush?
Well, I, I think it's obvious to me that if we don't reappoint him to the Parks and Recreation, or don't fill this vacancy, then, then he's not going to be on the Senior Task Force anymore because he's their representative. He's gonna, they're gonna have to appoint somebody else. So I, I think we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot by doing that. Um, we're, we're, we're damaging too much here, but, so I'm not gonna support this amendment.
All right. I'll call for the vote on the amendment. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
That brings us back to the original motion. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor. Commissioner LaVassar?
I, I know that, uh, Mr. Ellison is kind of a point of friction for a number of people in the city, but I do believe we're missing an opportunity here by excluding him. Uh, keep in mind, his perspective is one of, uh, you know, being a voice of people who may be somewhat cynical about government. That might be a group of people that, uh, would be less likely to complete the, the census than would the general population. And I do see that there could be some value keeping him there in order to get as complete of a census as possible.
Commissioner Macy?
I think Mr. Ellison, next time should put you down as a reference. Um, but he didn't, and the two people that he put down as references said in no uncertain terms that it would be disruptive and perhaps intimidating. Two things I don't want to hear when I'm thinking about my 2020 Complete Count Committee. Um, so that's, we're basing it on the references he provided, not any outside references, the ones he provided.
All right. Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. One last body of work for the Appointments Committee here, right?
Uh, or two.
Two?
So I will move the resolution, um, re, uh, reappointing, uh, the people who were previously termed out as listed.
Including Tamis.
We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, and we have a support by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? All right. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right.
Um, I think I'll let Commissioner Douglas take this one since I actually voted against it.
Okay. Um, we heard tonight, uh, the appeal from, actually, there's been a full-court press by the members of the Environmental Advisory Board to retain Tom Regan, who has served, um, nine years on the committee, the board, and is not eligible for reappointment. And I represent the commission on that board, and I certainly see his value to that committee. Um, he does, he doesn't just talk the talk, he walks the walk. Um, we have, they have had people coming to their committee meetings who aren't on the committee, who just want to be involved. And in fact, we just appointed two of those people to that board, um, uh, Brian and Woody. Um, the, they nevertheless have Tom, who remains interested, and at least one other person who has been attending meetings and who the board chair would like to see in a, um, more, you know, in a more committed role. Furthermore, there's a list as long as my arm, as long as Don Johnson's arm, of people who would like to be on that committee. Um, and they do a lot. And for that reason, we recommend that, and in fact, I will make a motion that the City Commission expands the membership of the Environmental, Environmental Advisory Board from nine to eleven members.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, support by Commissioner Macy.
So, um, give Commissioner Dubb his minority report. I voted against this at, at the Appointments Committee. Um, first of all, none of these, none of this had come to light. No one came to talk about, um, Mr. Regan at that time. Um, and we, as the Appointments Committee, didn't reappoint, we didn't reappoint anyone who was term limited unless they came before us and asked, or gave us some special reason, or we heard a special reason from the chair of the committee or from city staff. Um, and at the, at the talk about expanding the membership of this board from nine to eleven members, to me, having worked on a lot of teams and a lot of boards, seemed like it's not always the more the merrier with having a larger and larger board. But since then, we have heard quite a bit of information from this, uh, board and this, and city staff and Commissioner Douglas, uh, about the value of this institutional memory and the excitement about this board, and it's very active, and the feeling that, that the chair stated herself that it would be a benefit to have more members in this board. So I'm thus changing my vote.
So you voted against it before you voted for it?
That's right. Classic flip-flop.
Okay. That makes sense. I think it's fair logic. All right.
And I, I think this would leave it to the next Appointments Committee to make those appointments, and while we can't...
It's still us, though.
Is it still us?
Yeah. It's three more months.
Sure. How much?
No, the next meeting, it switches, so it's up to you.
Oh.
If you want to meet one more time before...
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Dubb?
Is, is part of your motion to reappoint Tom Regan as requested by the board chair?
Not at this point. No. Right now, my motion is just to increase the size of the board.
Commissioner Prush?
The only hesitation I have is that my experience is, is the larger the board gets, the more opportunities there are for people to say, oh, they don't need me to come this evening because there's ten other people. And then all of a sudden, you don't have a quorum, and it happens on a regular basis. So, I'll, I'll support this, but I'm, I'm nervous about it because I've seen that happen too many times, where the more there are, the more, the easier it is for you to say, oh, I, I don't feel like going tonight, I'm gonna stay home. Um, that may not happen with this board, given the nature of what they do and their excitement level about doing it. Um, but I'm just a little cautious about it.
Commissioner Macy?
So that's a concern that I shared and mentioned at the Appointments Committee, but now having heard from the chair that several of the people that we are appointing to this are people who show up anyway. Like, they weren't in fact even on the board and have been showing up regularly to the meetings. So it seems like the level of enthusiasm for this board, at least at this point in time, is higher than you might expect.
Okay.
Commissioner Dubb, then Commissioner LaVassar?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I think that's the right instinct, that a larger board is not necessarily a good thing. So I certainly wouldn't want to make a habit of this. I do think that this is a unique circumstance. I had served on the board for four years as a resident appointee, and then for six years as a commissioner, and they get incredibly good attendance at this board. Everyone is very engaged. They get, um, you know, programming, setup, uh, that they run themselves with, um, you know, minimal staff support. So, um, I think it's appropriate for this board, but I certainly wouldn't want to make a habit of this because I agree that that's the right instinct, that you could have trouble getting quorum, but I don't think that'll be a problem for this, this particular body.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Speaking of quorums, I, I just want to make sure that if we prove this tonight, that the quorum requirements don't immediately go up and that, uh, that the quorum requirements wouldn't go up until such a time as the, the commission actually makes appointments to the committees.
Yeah.
And, and I would refer that to, uh, Mr. Gillum to, to see if he sees any concerns there, and if so, if we can amend the motion accordingly to, to address those concerns.
Well, I guess the question I would have is whether or not the quorum requirements are set by rules of procedure or bylaws of the committee itself. By the bylaws? So...
For this one.
Unless those bylaws are changed, the quorum requirements won't change. So they would stay the same.
Could we make...
They will continue to be the same until the bylaws are changed, regardless of the number of members that this committee appoints, that the commission appoints to that committee.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if I understand. Are you saying it is a problem or it isn't a problem?
It would not change. As I understand, for Ms. Halas, the quorum requirements, at least for that committee, are set by the bylaws of that committee. So...
That's a fixed number?
Right.
I don't know. I assume. I don't know.
I'd have to check. They're all different.
I mean, you asked a lot of questions tonight about committees and resolutions that I don't have in front of me and didn't have any advance notice about. So, I don't know.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Mr. Gillum. I, I don't mean to put you on the spot. It's just, as these come up, I want to make sure that we're not creating problems for ourselves.
But, but absent any change to what the bylaws say by that committee, the bylaws are gonna continue to control.
Could, Mr. Gillum, could we make this resolution effective, like, the next meeting after, so if they're meeting in January, could we just have a, like, post-date on this decision? Is that possible?
You could make the change effective as of a certain date, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Dubb?
So I would move to amend the motion to take effect upon the affirmed appointment of the 10th and 11th members.
Motion?
Amendment? That would solve the problem to the extent that there is one, right?
Yeah.
If there is one, yeah.
Second by Commissioner LaVassar. Discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Anything out of the Appointments Committee?
No, now we need to vote on the main motion.
On the main motion. Okay. That's right, because we did the amendment. Okay. Now, adding the two additional members to the Environmental Advisory Board. Uh, is there a motion? Er, I'm sorry. Is there any other discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. You guys could be Major League Baseball team owners with your last-minute horse trading up to the deadline. I'm telling you. Goodness.
So hats off to Commissioner Macy, who did a great job chairing a...
My first chair, chairman.
A long and complicated meeting. And to the staff who kept us honest.
Yeah, mostly. Don, I want to talk about the software they're using.
All right. No dad jokes, inside jokes. I know what that means.
That's the worst.
All right. Well, this brings us to the end of the agenda. I'm sure we're all tired. So unless there's something for the betterment of our community and its members, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Douglas.
Second.
Support by Commissioner Gibbs. Discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We adjourned.